I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome you all to the 2020 deliberative session for the town of Wolfboro. My name's Randy Walker. I have the pleasure and privilege of serving as your moderator this evening. For those of you that are unfamiliar with the people up front, let me introduce them to you, and when I call your name, if you raise your hand, that would be most helpful. We have on our Board of Selectmen Chair Dave Senegal, Brad Harriman is the Vice Chair, Linda Murray, Dave Bowers, Paul O'Brien, and little father to y'all left, we have our Town Manager Jim Pinio, our perennial Town Clerk Pat Waterman, Mark Puffer who is Town Council. We have back here Matt Sullivan, who's can put his hand up, he's our Town Planner. We also have Dave Ford in the back, who's the Director of Public Works. Back up to the front, we have Troy Neff, who's our Finance Director, and Barry is in charge of the Electric Department, is right here. Also have on the Budget Committee Chairman John McDonald, Vice Chair Bob Tupper, Brian Black, Bob Maholland, Tom Bell, Bob Lohman, and Matt Plage. So before we delve into any substantive matters, a few preliminary issues I'd like to dispense with. First, there may be a few people in the audience that are not registered voters, and although we're happy to have you observe democracy in action, I would like to remind you that you cannot vote regarding any matter. The purpose of this evening is simply to determine the form of the articles that will appear on the ballot in March. We can explain them, we'll discuss them, we'll debate them, but ultimately, the purpose is simply to determine the form of the articles that'll appear on the ballot. We're not going to vote on them this evening, but we will discuss them. Now, there's 35 articles that we have to go through in March. Article 1 regards the election of Town Officials. We will just simply vote for those people that have already submitted their names for candidacy purposes. We do have two contested elections for Selectmen. We have three people running for two slots. Luke Freudenberg, Luke, are you here? He's running for Selectmen. Linda Murray is running as well, and Dave Senegal, the two incumbents are running again. As supervisors of the checklist, we have two people running for one position. Jeannie Mitchell is running, as is Tom Zardi, he's the incumbent. Those are the only contested elections that we have. Articles 2 through 10 involve planning and zoning issues. We will not discuss those either, because the Planning Board has already had their statutory hearings regarding those articles. We will however, discuss Articles 11 through 35, which is 25 articles, we have a lot of ground to cover. Anybody that desires to amend a particular article may make a motion. I would request that you reduce it to writing, keep it as simple as you can, so it's easy for me to read and for the voters to understand. I also don't permit amendments to amendments on the floor at any one time, so if somebody does have an amendment, we'll discuss it, vote it either up or down, and then move on to another amendment. We also operate under the auspices of SB 2, which has three procedural twists. The first one is that you can't kill an article by passing over or tabling it. Number two, you cannot amend the default budget amount. And number three, we cannot change an article whose language is prescribed by law. You can change the dollar amount of an article, you can change the substance, you can change the purpose, you can change the intent, but you cannot delete the subject matter. So we do have to leave at least some subject matter in. Generally, I will recognize the person that presented a particular article. Most of the articles were presented by the Selectmen, and I therefore recognize one of the Selectmen first to address that, before we open it up to everyone else to speak. We do have a few petition warrant articles, and we'll let one of the petitioners address those articles when we get to them. For those of you that do speak, if you could use one of these two microphones, state your name, when you come up to the microphone, that would be great. For those of you that have cell phones, this would be a great time to take them out, make sure that they're turned off, so that they don't disrupt the meeting as it proceeds. I'll read each and every article, before we discuss it, particularly for those that are listening on the radio or on television. After I read it, it does not need to be moved or seconded, we'll just jump right in and start discussion. Anything we do this evening requires a simple majority vote, either pass or fail, there are no super majorities will be required this evening. And after a reasonable period of time has elapsed regarding the discussion of a particular article, I would entertain a motion to terminate debate, or call the question, which I treat as synonymous. But I always waver on the side of letting people speak. We only do this once a year, and we don't want to prematurely or precipitously cut off debate. You're also all aware that a motion can be made that will change an earlier article, so I therefore encourage all of you to stay until the end, until you actually have a motion to adjourn that's passed. If you have to leave, and you want to make sure that we do not reconsider a particular article or motion, you can move to restrict reconsideration of that, and if that passes, then we will not discuss that motion or article this evening. And finally, we will only discuss the subject matter of issues that appear on the warrant. It would be inappropriate or unfair to discuss new matters that weren't noticed. And those are basically the same rules that we've had in the past, and it will use this evening. Now finally, I'd like to remind you all to vote on March 10th. We'll be voting right here in this room, the hours will be eight in the morning to seven at night. It's a long day for those of us that serve at the polls. It would be greatly appreciated if you could bring your licenses and be prepared to go right through the line as best you can. So with that having been said, let's get to the substantive issues that we hear for tonight. Normally, we would turn to Article 11, but it has been requested that we jump the line and move Article 35 to the beginning, so that these young ladies who have bedtimes can address their particular article. So we're going to start with Article 35, which I will read. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of conducting a feasibility study for the renovation of the municipal electric generator building located at 22 Lerner Street." That's tax map lot 21771. "...into a community center with a commercial kitchen and two recreation rooms." This has been submitted by petition. "The estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is .0125 dollars per $1,000 assessed valuation. It's been recommended by the Board of Selectmen on a three-to-one vote. The Budget Committee unanimously recommended it. In order for it to pass in March, it will require a majority vote." So is there any discussion regarding Article 35? Does somebody here want to make a presentation to us?
Thank you for letting us present our idea to you tonight. We are the Electric Llamas of Girl Scout Robotics Team. This is Adriana, Amelia, Evelyn, Miram, and I'm Evelyn. We can compete in the first LEGO League, a worldwide program that requires a robot in a community project. This year, the project is to look around our community and find a building or space that is underused, abandoned, or in need of a new use. Then create a plan for its potential utilization.
To start the project, to start the project process, we met with Dave Ford to get an idea of what he thought we could consider. Dave suggested that we look into working with the old generator building, which we ultimately chose. This was because it has a lot of space, it has a great location, and it has great history for our town. The electrical building is currently being used as storage space for the town offices. The last time it was occupied for town use was when it was used to generate backup electricity for the town before it closed back in 2008. Since it is not currently being used for the community's benefit, renovations wouldn't hinder the community, and because it isn't on the verge of crumbling, plus, plus there is already a cost to upkeep the building, so let's put it to use. We would love to have this building generate money to cover the costs of its operation instead of just draining the money from the town.
Once we had chosen a building, we next considered what we would use it for. In our conversation with Dave, he pointed us in a few directions. After our meeting, when we met with Christine of Parks and Rec, Amy Muccio from the Senior Center, and Barry Muccio of the Electric Department, to understand what they thought our town was missing.
We created a survey for town members to get insight into what they felt our town was missing. We spent a day in late August conducting surveys downtown. We asked store employees and people on the sidewalk, we got a few summer residents, visitors, and a lot of year-round residents. We were able to collect approximately 50 surveys. Then we put our survey on Facebook in a Wolfboro Town page. We also had lunch with the seniors to talk to them about our idea and have them take the survey. To date, we have 122 responses.
Our survey asked, "Do you know where the community center is?"
81% do know where the community center is.
Did you know you could rent the community center?
Only 58% knew that they could, would rent the community center.
Would you rent, would you rent the community center as it is now?
83% said no.
Would you be in favor of preserving the generator building for town use?
90% were overwhelmingly in favor of preservation for town use.
We then, we then asked about what our town has and is or missing. Does the town have a commercial kitchen?
84% said no.
Are you aware that we have, we have a town-funded senior center without a permanent space?
74% said no, they did not know that we had a senior center.
Lastly, we presented our idea of converting the generator building to community center, and asked them to rate our proposal on a scale of 1 to 5, with 5 being the highest.
1.6% or 2 people said extremely bad.
7.5 or 9 people was neutral.
20.7% or 25 people said good.
70% or 85 people said extremely good.
After analyzing the results, we noticed a few things. That residents know about the current community center, but would not rent it. Residents overwhelmingly were in favor of preserving the generator building for town use. We also asked our survey takers what they felt our town was missing, and the largest theme was a large, open, multipurpose year-round room with a space for community events and young people.
We felt the community is missing a nice usable community center with a commercial kitchen. This new space could be used as a permanent location for a senior center, a place for the Parks and Rec children to relocate in case of rain during the summer months, and a year-long location for family-based events.
Using the survey results, we updated our plan, keeping in mind all the possible uses we could fit into our space. We proposed converting the old electrical generator building, the beautiful brick building located on Lerner Street, into a new community center with three rooms structure.
The first room would be the front hall. It would be a large room with about 2,400 square feet with ADA compliant restrooms, and would be located right off the street, complete with handicap parking. It would include a projection screen for town movie nights in the winter, a rock wall for town use, and floor markings for seniors and youth games. This would be an ideal area for our senior center to use during the day, with enough space for programs from yoga to painting to educational classes and sit-down lunch.
The second room would be a smaller room off the back of the hall. This would be created by adding a level to the existing back building, making it level with the large hall. This is the perfect location for the kitchen. It would be a commercial kitchen, complete with a dishwasher for the senior center. It would have space for small classes and plenty of space for food prep. The ADA three-stall bathrooms would be located on this new floor. There would be a small lobby area for the entrance to the kitchen and elevator.
The third room would be 1,100 square foot game rec room with a TV and game tables. It would have a bathroom and a large supply closet. This room would have floor outlets for the quilting guild. This floor would have its own entrance and access to the elevator for other floors. This floor would all, could be rented out at the same time as the great hall, thereby having two different groups using the space. It would have a small area for parking or drop-off located in the back of the building.
We would also include a rooftop garden. It would have a space for, it would have space for outdoor classrooms, community gardening parties, and stargazing. The garden would be located on the back portion of the building on top of the kitchen created by adding a floor. The front portion of the building would house the solar panels. This area would be fenced, and all safety features would be added.
Our plan would add, our plan would be a permanent location for the senior center. The center would be available for public rent and community meetings. It would be used as more space for the winter farmer's market and perhaps a monthly artisans' market. We would use many historical photos and tools to decorate the building. We would create a stairwell for the multiple parking on the Bridge Falls path for safe travel for Parks and Rec children, as well as an overflow parking on community nights. This space could be used to create an after-school program for older elementary school in conjunction, conjunction with Parks and Rec. We would demolish the current community center, old fire slash old fire station, for more public parking.
We feel that the current community center is too small and in need of too many repairs, and it would be more beneficial for the town to remove it. We spoke with some firefighters who would like to use the old community center as a training exercise when we demolish it, which would be ironic, since it was once the fire department, plus, it helps reduce demolition costs.
Throughout the process, we have met with many professionals who have helped us from our proposal. We have talked with representatives for solar energy, elevators, constructors, rock climbing companies, town community center directors, and two architects/technical service firms, as well as our town departments.
To help us visualize this project, I was able to use the Professional Program Chief Architect with the instruction of Kurt Clayson from Clayson Remodeling. I first created the building as it is now, then I took this, that building and modified it to show what we wanted to change, how we wanted to change the building. I added all the necessary improvements and upgrades as we continued to talk about what our community needed. To maximize the large open hall, we chose to add the bathroom into the back structure to give us a large 2,400 square foot room.
We contacted two firms for quotes for our feasibility studies. Both firms were very pleased with our work and will use it to shape the feasibility study. They both quoted us prices that are in line with the budget number we are asking the voters to approve. This study will help our town understand the condition of the building and surrounding area. This will help us determine the possibility of restoring and using it for a community
The people who would benefit most from our plan are seniors, children, and overall every community member. It would create a space for community events all through the year, but also a large space to rent out to community members. The ability to have a multipurpose room for rent that would be used for weddings, birthdays, family reunions, and endless more possibilities. A rock wall would be available to rent as well. With the proper equipment and training and trained personnel provided by the town at their ability, and for an additional cost, during the winter months, the senior center would be able to use the room and kitchen as their permanent space. They would no longer need to use a different building to have special programs. Currently, they use the church kitchen and the town attic for programs. Having everything located in one place would be easier to coordinate activities, and we feel would entice more seniors to stay active and social. Having them in a space where children also hang out might make some crossover activities beneficial to all. We have found, we have found that having an updated community center would have a positive effect on our town as a whole. It would be another great reason to visit and live in our community.
If this community center proves to be a good idea, we would set up a committee with town members and set up a Friends of Lerner Street organization to collect funds. We would also look at getting many grants for the space. There are a few grants that we already have in mind. We hope this is just the first step toward a new center. Thank you for listening to our presentation. We will gladly take any questions.
Does anyone dare ask any questions of these young ladies? Any comments, any questions? Ladies, you are very well organized, showed good poise, you are articulate, it's going to be a very tough act to follow this evening. Mike, you have a comment?
I think we're looking at our future planning board. My only concern is on this particular, my only concern in this particular article...
You could talk right into that mic, it would be helpful.
My only concern in this particular article is that we're running a charrette later on this year to look at all of the uses for the various buildings in the Lerner Street area. This is only one of them, and I'm just wondering whether or not if we earmark this 25K to turn the electric generation building into a community center, are we sequestering those funds to that purpose only? Or can we, if the charrette decides that a community center should encompass the generating building site and the old community center's site both demolished, God help us, that 25,000 could then be used towards that purpose? That's my, that's my only concern. Otherwise, I have nothing to praise for these young ladies.
Anybody want to respond to that?
I can respond to that. Any capital reserve fund can be put back out on a warrant article to repurpose it, and it would, I'd take a two-thirds vote.
Any further questions, comments? All right, well, thank you, Electric Llamas, you did a very nice job. Marie's got something here.
Hi, my name's Marie Durgan. I've lived in town this year, 30 years, and I've worked for the town of Wolfboro 25 years this coming November. And I grew up in New Hampshire, but I've learned a lot about all the different communities, and this particular community, we are lacking a community center, and I feel that this particular building that we're looking at, this would be an excellent purpose for this building, and I hope that the charrette will come to that conclusion also. And I think these young ladies deserve a round of applause, because they've worked really hard on this, and these are some of our future engineers and civil engineers and architects.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Article 11, which is the Kerry Beach Parking Lot and Water Quality Okay, it's been moved to restrict reconsideration of Article 35. Is there a second? Second, all those in favor of not reconsidering Article 35 this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
All as opposed, motion carries, we won't reconsider that this evening. Moving on to Article 11. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $450,000 for the purposes of parking lot, roadside, and beachfront construction to be completed in order to reduce storm water and water quality impacts at Kerry Beach, and further authorize the issuance of not more than $450,000 of bonds and notes for this purpose, and according to the Municipal Finance Act, which is RSA Chapter 33. Such sum to be reduced by any federal, state, or private funds may available therefore, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate. An issue such bonds and notes and determine the rate of interest, maturity, and other terms for this purpose." The estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is zero. For 2021, it's 0.5 per thousand assessed valuation. For 2022, it's the same amount. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen on a vote of four to one, unanimously recommended by the Budget Committee, and because it is a bond, it will require a 60% vote in order for it to pass in March. And I'm going to call on Paul O'Brien to address this. Paul, you're up.
Thank you, Randy. This is, like all of our beaches, this is a beautiful beach. Great opportunity to go there on a summer night with a pizza and watch the sun go down. We got a little wake-up call a few years ago. We had a cyanobacteria event around the Labor Day weekend. And I think what this caused is it caused a lot of us in this town to kind of get rallied around the fact that we really need to deal with and protect the waters in our, in our town. What Dave is going to show you is, maybe not some pretty pictures, but you're going to see why we need to make some investments in our beaches and make some investments in our waters. And so I'll turn it over to Dave to take us forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Ford, Public Works Director.
I'm going to throw just a couple of pictures, and we actually used these pictures from last year, it really tells a story. The parking lot is flat, it's gravel, and after a heavy rainstorm, it erodes, and you can see what happens, the water ponds, and then it washes over the beach and into the lake. There's another picture, again, this is not unusual, it is a, and this is the biggest problem, is this one, as well as along the roadside, where we have some roadside erosion creating problems also. This is the watershed, looking at the big picture. Because we are looking at, not only at this, Selectmen O'Brien was correct, we have initiated a lot of issues regarding this watershed, we're very concerned. Winter harbor leads into the Kerry Beach, it's landlocked, I mean, we, there's no water to flush it out, and a lot of the water that comes into this beach area is from runoff, and that runoff is carrying nutrients, and that is our problem. Surface runoff, sediment and pollutants to the lakes, road drains, which creates excessive nutrients. And it surfaced as a cyanobacteria outbreak. We were very concerned about that. We have taken a lot of measures to make sure that we can be out there testing and forewarn the public, if we have a problem, the summer was better than the previous summer, which we did have the outbreak, but we are concerned. This could be considering, considerable public health concerns, as well as potential beach closures and limited use for the lake. In 2019, we requested and received $50,000. We hired the Engineering Company of Underwood Engineers, they did a detailed study, and we made our presentations to the Board of Selectmen, and had come up with a, we feel is the best solution, which would not only include a lot of drainage and stormwater treatment, but other amenities that would improve the parking lot and the erosion issues that are occurring on the area. If this is approved, we are now working on the permitting. This money will be used to put in the final engineering, do construction documents, get it out to bid, with our hope of starting construction right after Labor Day, and so that the improvements would be ready for the summer of 2021. This is a drawing, it's two drawings to kind of show, this is on the, with the beach side, and what we're showing is Forest Road, where the road is very close to the beach. And on the left-hand side, there's an area where people use to launch kayaks and canoes. That also takes water coming from Forest Road, creating erosion, as well as runoff from all that frontage there. And we're looking at doing a erosion control project along that edge, which would get the water into the ground and stop it from going over the beach. Along the beach area between the grass and the sand, we have continual erosion going on, so there'll be design taking that in consideration to mitigate that. We are... We also would like to add an amenity for people with disabilities. We would provide a ramp that, we would have a special wheelchair that would be able to get children, elderly people into the lake who know, who couldn't get there otherwise. So it's a kind of an added, we've talked to Christine Poxarek. And we would also add other pathways that would be a little more organized, the beach. The biggest part of it would be the parking lot itself, in which we would raise the parking lot and tilt it back towards Forest Road, in which we would put grass treatment swales and then allow the water to get back in the ground, and as well as adding amenities like trees, new fences. And we are not looking at, at this point, expanding the, the wastewater, the septic system at this point. That's still under evaluation. We would bring a handicap accessible facility closer to the beach, which is in a left-hand side, right between the parking area and the grass area. That is it in a nutshell, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, if anyone had any questions about that project.
Any questions or comments regarding Article 11? Warren.
I'm an environmental scientist by training. Have been the Chair of the Assessment Subcommittee of our Cyanobacteria Task Force that was set up over the past year, but also happen to live on Whitegate Road, which is in this area and several hundred yards away from Cary Beach. There are a lot of potential sources of nutrients to the body of water. We undertook a number of different measurements this year, the results of which have just recently come in. And I will tell you that all indications from the measurements we've received indicate that the concern is not septic systems, not stuff that's already on the bottom, but is, are nutrients that are being added to the, to the lake in stormwater. And as our climate is, is changing so that our, our weather events are getting more extreme, it's really important for us to get on top of this before our, our issues are not what's going into the lake, but what is already in the lake. So I, I, I very much support this and, and recommend that it be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Any further comments or questions regarding Article 11? Steve, could you come to the microphone, please?
Yeah. Is this, is this project going to affect the Cary at all? So is it still going to be able to carry a boat across the Cary?
The Cary, which is a little-known kind of secret that people should know about, that that's how to get from across the road on that public right of way. This will have no impact on that, except we will be, we're working with neighbors in the neighborhood to see if there are any other drainage issues, and I think there may be on the other side of the road. So I did talk to some residents and we will be looking at any erosion of Forest Road is causing on any private property. So if there's some issues there, we might address it, but that's not going to have any impact on the Cary. Because we are going to allow the beaches, I mean, the, we showed the, see off to the left, we still will have the boat ramp. See that area to the left?
So you can see, you'd still be able to maintain the historic-
Preservation.
Yep.
On this side of the lake-
The reason it's called the Cary V.
Right, that's, that's an interesting point, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But that, that's not going to be stopped.
Any further questions or comments? And seeing none, we'll move on to Article 12, which is the Libby Museum Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to establish a Libby Museum Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of renovating, expanding, and repairing the Libby Museum, and further to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 to be deposited in said capital reserve fund to be under the custody of the trustee of the trust funds. The Selectmen are designated as agents to expend the funds in this capital reserve fund. The estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is 15 cents per thousand, $1,000 assessed valuation. It's recommended by the Selectmen on a vote of three to one, the Budget Committee by a vote of five to three, and a majority vote will be required for it to pass in March. And Brad, you going to start us off with this article?
Yes, thank you, Randy. The Libby Museum was taken over by the town in 1956, and since then with minimal maintenance over the years. Museum currently has structural issues, air quality issues, which is taking its toll on the exhibits. I do ask for your support on this article, and I'll now turn this over to Alana Albee for a little further presentation.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Brad, for the introduction. My name's Alana Albee, I'm the Director at the Libby Museum. I started just three years ago, and to be honest, I'm a little surprised to be standing here pleading for saving the Libby. We have produced some leaflets that you're welcome to take home that will give you some more detail about what I'm going to talk to, towards tonight. What I'd like to give you is a little brief background about the Libby, a summary of the problems that we're facing and the work that's been done in the last nine months leading up to this warrant article. The two things to remember about the Libby, on the left, obviously, is that it is a national registered historic place for its contribution to education. It was registered by the late Phil DeSalle in 1989, and it is the oldest and only natural history museum remaining in the state of New Hampshire. It was, as Brad explained, handed over to the town in 1956, following the family of, the Libby family's inability to maintain it. It was the result of the town petitioning the probate court to run it. That was in part because Dr. Libby's will stipulates that it be open every summer to summer visitors. It overlooks Winter Harbor, as you can see, and that lovely open vista that so many of us enjoy when we come from Tufton Borough is actually deeded in perpetuity to remain an open space. We have approximately 4,000 visitors a year, and we're open from June 1st to Columbus Day. It adds up to about 15 weeks a year. Schools have visited for many years. I'm 63, I'm proud to admit, and I was a carpenter school student when I first went there. In fact, it was 1956 when the town took it over, and that was my birth year, just to put it in visible form. Many community groups visit and use it. We have children's programs, weddings, and special events. It's free to children under 16 and to veterans, and $5 an adult. On the left here, you'll see it's a distant shot of some of our collections and the old antique cabinets. We have over 3,000 rare items that have been collected from as close as the local woods to as far as China. And some of Dr. Libby's original collection remains, including a full-size alligator, hundreds of birds. We also have one of the largest Native American Indian collections, the remains of Governor Wentworth's mansion, many parts of that, and some of the original maps of the town of Wolfboro. We get about five donations a year in kind of various antiquities. And in 2018 and 19, we were offered two very large collections, which we have accepted in principle, but not in practice, of over 250 now North American birds and mammals, which would enhance our collection greatly. You can see what happens after Columbus Day on the right here. That's what it looks like in the winter. Everything is covered with specialized Tyvek covers because the museum is uninsulated and unheated. So 108 years of uninsulated and unheated environment has really taken its toll. The town, the town has tried to keep it going. I'm not even sure that Dr. Libby expected that his artifacts would still be there and still on show 108 years later. So it's no surprise in some ways that we are where we are. But the biggest problem we have is moisture, and I just wanted to show you what happens. This is a skunk. And on the left is mold on the skunk's face, and in the middle is me taking it off delicately with a Q-tip, and on the right what the guy should have looked like. But the most important point on the slide is the date, which says December 2019. We closed on Columbus Day, and that was the mold by the first of December 2019. So it's pretty rapid in terms of the moisture's impact on the collection. It's a timber-framed building. When you look at it, it's kind of hard to believe that the Libby's a timber-framed building, because it's uniquely built with hollow walls, and it vents across this crawl space and up through the hollow walls. And it keeps it cool in the summer. It was, it was a unique design in the days when Dr. Libby built it. It's built from timber from Rattlesnake Island. But the, over the years, the moisture has accumulated and deteriorated much of the building. So here you'll see some of the deterioration. On the lower left, in the far corner, you'll see the whiskey barrel. Actually, it stands on whiskey barrel forms. And you'll see the gap between the main timbers. It's unsettled, and it doesn't go below frost line. The foundation is crumbling. Further up in the middle, at the top, you'll see the, the settlement. We've got gaps, that's an inside wall there, and the front wall is beginning to move and bow. We've had to have laser measurements over several years. The paint is peeling, the plaster is falling, and down on the lower left, we have some indications of rotting timber and potential rodent infestation. So in 2019, the last warrant article, we approved a feasibility study that was generously funded by the late Betty Schroth Estate and the Byber Foundation. And we undertook a series of studies, including a building condition assessment, a preservation assessment, laser wall movements. We reinforced the foundation, and then we worked on the technical designs with Alba Architects, who have provided much of the work to date. We presented to the Capital Improvements Committee and the Selectmen four times, and we began to fundraise in June because the Friends of the Libby realized that we needed to start saving this building. So the architects came up with suggestions, which would not impact the front facade of the building. It would look exactly as it is today, once we restore it, with the portico, as you know, and the high-level windows, it would just be repaired. We would temperature control the inside and insulate it, and we would anchor the building to a modest rear addition. So the bottom slide is the vision of the museum as you come from Tufton Borough. The back on the left side of the slide is the proposed new back entrance, but that would not be visible from the road because of the trees. At the top is the proposed modest addition at the back with a curved roof, and the curved roof allows for it not to be visible from the front of the building. The new addition would contain a sheltered entrance, a children and multipurpose room, small office, and two toilets, which are ADA compliant, a corridor onto a mezzanine, which you can overlook the lake, and I'll show you a 3D of that in a moment, and a small lift and stairs down. That's the layout of the mezzanine, and I know that it's very difficult to see the details. These are online, you're welcome to see them, and I've also got copies of the architects' reports here, too. This is a 3D image of what the one room, as those who have been in the Libby will know, it's one large room. Right now, it has a false wall and a toilet in this large room. All of that would be returned to its original exhibit space. We would go back to the original ceiling. Right now, we have a 1970s hung ceiling, and those thin rods would reinforce the walls, which are at the moment bowing outward. If you entered from the back of the building, you would come through a corridor onto this mezzanine and then be able to come down to the lower level. The rail of the mezzanine would be exhibit, exhibit items as well. The total cost of restoration is a hefty, and I admit it's hefty, $2.8 million. And these construction estimates include a sprinkler system and are based on November pricing. That includes off costs and construction costs. The anticipated fundraising total from June to January, we have raised $743,000, $300, $743,300. And those are firm commitments and cash in hand. We've got 10 grants so far. So our warrant article would be for a $300,000 capital reserve fund, which would get us some way further. So we would have 36%, and we would continue to fundraise diligently with the Friends of the Libby. So that's all I have to say, except I'd like to show you a picture of Dr. Libby, his wife Hattie, and his son Arthur. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alana Zer. Any questions or comments regarding this article? Tom? And then Mike?
I'm Tom Goodwin. I, for full disclosure, I am a board member with the Friends of the Libby Museum. The current state of the building is deteriorating, and we are at a point where we have to start restricting the access to the building because of its condition. And it's important that we restore this building so that we take something that is rapidly becoming a liability to the town and turn it back into an asset of the town. This $300,000 we're asking for this year on the ballot would go a long way to proving the commitment of the town so that we can then get additional commitments from other donors. So I strongly encourage you to support this warrant article. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. And Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have some questions for the Selectmen. Are the Selectmen satisfied on the ownership of the Libby Building and Lot? Is the town the registered owner on the deed of that building and lot? Or is an entity named the Libby Trust or something similar named as the owner of that building and that lot? That's the first question. I have a couple of others, if I may keep the microphone. Thank you. Pending a response from the Selectmen.
I know that the, the Libby was given to the Board of Selectmen, who accepted it on behalf of the town, as you probably know, many years ago, but I don't know the status right now.
It's, it's our understanding that the Board of Selectmen are the trustees for that building that is owned by the town.
I understand the Board of Selectmen are trustees for the building, for the lot, and for the contents of the building. Are the Board of, is the town the registered owner of that building and that lot? That's the first question. Second question, which I haven't really gotten a proper answer from, or second question is, is there a trust in existence named the Libby Trust or the Dr. Libby Trust or something similar that you are trustees of?
All right. To be honest, Mike, I don't know the answers to that. You know, we have had conversations, and we are going to be meeting as a group of trustees, the Board of Selectmen as trustees of the Libby, to have discussions about how we're going to move forward with this and research into these, definitely these two questions you just brought up to us, to make sure of the ownership, and if there is a Libby Trust out there, to find out the status of these things. So that's all I can say right now.
I can, I can go from the will of Dr. Libby, which I have written here, and it was given to his family to take care of. As Alana said, in 1956, the town of Wolfboro voted to have the Board of Selectmen petition the probate court to become the successor trustees. And in the will, it said that, that the town of Wolfboro's Board of Selectmen could be appointed successor trustees. We have, I know where you, what you want. What was very interesting about this was there were two parcels. The first parcel was the Libby Park. That parcel, the Board of Selectmen stopped being, asked the probate court to relieve us as successor trustees. It was given to an individual, and Tufton Borough was a trustee, and she gave a fiduciary It was given to an individual, and Tuftonborough was a trustee, and she gave a fiduciary deed to the Conservation Commission. If it is the will of the voters who want us to get a fiduciary deed, we could go petition the court to get that deed. We are right now doing everything we would, we would if we got a fiduciary deed. I did talk to Attorney Puffer beforehand, and he felt that the probate court would have no problem giving us ownership of the building in a fiduciary deed. Or we can continue our ownership through the will.
Well, you don't have ownership through the will. You have trusteeship through the will. And I defer, and I defer to Mr. Puffer, almost certainly the probate court will, because it's a sticky situation, and that's a logical and apparently fair solution to it. But the problem is that you currently, sorry, we currently do not own that building and that lot. And I wonder, how can we appropriate town money for the upkeep of a building on a lot, neither of which we own?
Mr. Puffer, are you willing to weigh in here at all?
I'm sorry?
Are you willing to weigh in?
Certainly. To answer your original question, you said, is there, is there a, you asked whether there was a trust.
I asked, no, I asked whether the town had ownership of the building and the lot. I know there's a, there, the Board of Selectmen are trustees for a trust. On the New Hampshire Attorney General's list of charitable trusts in the state, there is no trust named the Libby Trust.
Okay. My understanding is that, and I thought you asked whether there was a trust, and the answer, of course, is yes. If there's trustees, there's going to be a trust and vice versa.
Can you name it?
If there's a trust, there's got to be trustees.
Can you name it?
The Henry F. Libby Rev, or, or, Trust, or whatever, whatever his, his will indicated would be the name of it. That would be the name of it still.
Has it been maintained since '56?
The trust, yes.
It has.
Yeah, there's been trustees of it since then.
It should show up on the.
Mike, Mike, just let him try to finish.
I beg your pardon. Mike, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah. Selectman Murray talked about going to the court. If that's the will of the people, if that's the will of the town, you go to probate court. I think you'd probably need the probate court's permission to have it conveyed to the town because the probate court was the one that appointed the Selectmen as trustees. So I think they would, they would have jurisdiction. You couldn't just do it.
Agreed. You probably couldn't just do it. If I may, how then can we appropriate public funds for a building and a lot that we are not currently granted by probate court ownership of?
Because the Selectmen are trustees. And that's enough of, that's enough of an ownership interest. It's always been treated as a, as a town facility. And it's, it's been insured by the town as part of its property, along with the Town Hall and everything else.
Agreed. But you, you know, you cannot, I beg your pardon, I don't mean to enter into a debate and take the public's time, but it seems to me that there is an irregularity here. That we do not have a clear title. We're appropriating money for a project to which we do not have clear title. We are promised we should probably get it, and you're probably right that we would. And in the meantime, our Board of Selectmen are the trustees for the Libby Trust, wearing both hats, appropriating money for a project which they are then going to expend the money for. It just, the whole bowl of wax seems very irregular to me. And I'm, I would much be happier to see the $300,000 figure zeroed out until the matter of ownership is resolved, till we have a clear schedule of what we're doing, and then we can proceed thereafter. But right now, to appropriate money paid for by the taxpayer for a property that we do not own, doesn't seem to me to be proper. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Bell? If you want to come up to the microphone.
I'll talk loud if I can.
No, if you go to the microphone, we got people that are listening on the radio and TV cannot hear you unless you go to the microphone. There you go.
My name is Tom Bell. My recollection of the last meeting was twofold. First, that the Libby Museum had a real renovation problem and a collapsing entity. And so I thought we voted on just, what's the word? Not renovation, but repair?
Repair.
Not expansion, not, not necessarily renovation, but repair. The, the other thing I recall is that we, we would, we took this on in '56 in good faith and have done so since then. And that's the reason why we're continuing to suggest that we do it. But the big thing that we've, I've noticed is that it's repair, not expansion, not renovation, because the building is really in dire need.
Suzanne?
Suzanne Ryan. The warrant article is very specific and gives latitude. It says, "for the purpose of renovating, expanding, and repairing." So as this project moves forward, the Selectmen have the latitude to work with the Libby on that. I would also like to note that for years, since probably, what did you say, in the 50s, '56, the town, under town-owned properties, has recorded map 14258755 North Main Street, Libby Museum, as 1.60 acre, $1,008,000. And map 142lot59 North Main Street, 0.30 acre, $25,500. So we've treated it as inventory in our town assets.
Mike?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to this article. In the second line, I'd like to remove the words renovating, expanding, and. The article would read, "for the purpose of repairing the Libby Museum," and leave the dollar amount at $300,000, although I prefer it not to be $300,000.
All right? Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove three words from Article 12. Those three words are renovating, expanding, and and. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Matt, you want to go up to the?
Sure.
Mike?
I'm Matthew Platch, a member of the Budget Committee. When this came to the Budget Committee originally, it was discussed as a, a bond issue. And there was a lot of back and forth, there was a lot of back and forth on that. Originally, the bond, I think, was going to be?
2.8.
Yeah, 2.8. That was the final version that we saw, the 2.8. That ended up, and that was for, to allow for the expansion. And the plans looked great. It looks like a world-class expansion. It's a great plan. When it finally came to the Budget Committee in the current form, there was discussion about the word "expansion." And the explanation we got at that time was, well, we might have to add bathrooms and HVAC. But there was no determination that we're going to do this expansion, as proposed. And what I'm hearing tonight is, you know, this is sort of a proposal that's being pushed. And I don't think that's what the, I don't think that's what everyone on the Budget Committee was voting for. I would agree with the proposal, I would strongly agree with the proposal to limit this, this year to a renovation or a repair, because the existing facility really does need to be repaired. There's no question about that. And I think the town has an obligation where it stands to preserve this as a town asset, regardless of who owns it. The charitable trust, that can be cleared up. I think we have time over the next year for that to happen, and then talking about, talk about an expansion. But right now, the immediate need is the repair, not the expansion. So I would support, I strongly support this motion.
Hi, I'm Julie Jacobs. I'm currently the Vice President of the Friends. I don't think you understand that you can't just repair the old building. To repair the old building, you have to hook on the new portion that would be considered an addition. Otherwise, it's not going to work in the way it's been designed. I, I don't know as if we can take out the words the way that Mike said, because if you don't leave in renovating, repairing, and expanding, that kind of ties in those dollars.
Expansion be needed to accommodate an HVAC system on the side, that can be dealt with at a later date. But at the time, right now, I think we should simply limit it to repair of the structure, get our ownership and the trust situation straightened out, and then move on from there.
Suzanne?
Being, being short, it's a little difficult. Please forgive my ignorance, but am I to understand that this warrant article that says, "for the purpose of renovating, expanding, and repairing," that was voted on by the Budget Committee eight to zero, is actually not the warrant article? That you voted on eight to zero? That you actually voted for something different that didn't have renovating and expanding in it? I'm, I'm questioning that, because that's what I'm hearing.
Anybody from the Budget Committee, a Bob? We got three Bobs over there, so you can pick between you which one I meant.
Thank you, Randy. Randy, I just, for a little bit of housekeeping purposes, I believe you stated, and we voted five to three, and, which means there's a misprint in this handout. The handout reads eight, zero, and we voted five to three, so we did not vote eight, zero. The warrant article was presented to us for our recommendation, to be presented to the voters, and we, and recently, we did vote five to three to recommend the warrant article. Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Randy, thank you. Just a comment on the, on the amendment. You know, I'm not in favor of the amendment removing renovating, expanding, and. And the reason being, if this gets passed, it's for the $300,000, and we go in and identify some repairs to the building out there for, say, if they get done, you know, $100,000, we have $100,000 left. And next year, we come at, come back with a proposal, you know, for the rest of the project, which includes a, an expansion of some sort to house either HVAC or the offices and mezzanine and things like that. That would limit you to not be able to utilize that $100,000 toward that next phase of the project by removing it now, because it just wouldn't be allowed to be put towards a project that would include any expansion or expanding or renovating. It just says repairing only, so that's why I would be voting against this amendment. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? The other Bob.
Robert Loman of the Budget Committee. It seems to me that the repairs to this facility, the condition of the building being such as it is, are more than ample, the $300,000 is going to get chewed up really quickly. So I disagree that there's going to be money left over.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Tom, I'm just going to make a, an, you go right up. Just make an observation. We're in article, the third article. We've been here an hour. At this rate, we'll be here until about 4:00 AM, which is okay by me, but some of you may want to get to bed before then. So, go ahead.
I would just like to say, Tom Goodwin again, that there's a very fine line between repair and restoration. It's a, it's a gray area. And I think restricting it to repairs really does hinder the overall movement forward of this project. And based on the architect's input, it is the, the success of a restoration to this building hinges on that small expansion on the back to stabilize this building. That it's really not possible to restore this building successfully without some stabilizing effort from an additional expansion to the back. So I am in favor of keeping the wording the way it is, because we're establishing a capital reserve fund, not just for repairs this year, but to move this project forward in years to come.
Tom?
Tom Bell, I'm back again. As the owner of a 250-year-old barn, stabilization is the key word. Roof, structure, foundation. So I would support renovate, structure that was being resupplied and made safe. That does not include, if it includes expansion, it would be expansion to structure that would support the actual Libby Museum. So I still go back to the fact that I think I voted on eliminating expansion and renovation. And it was basically making sure that it was a stable structure.
Any further discussion, Suzanne?
Here we go again, putting money down a rabbit hole, not having a goal, which this warrant article gives a goal, for renovation, repair, and expanding. As you said, the building needs to be stabilized. That's going to take probably more than $300,000 to stabilize that building before you even start renovating. So please, don't support the amendment. Thank you.
All right, Mike, we'll give you the last word, but that's it.
Final bite at the apple. As I remember from the slide Alana projected up on the board here, there is considerable amount of public funding, donations to the Libby project. If they want to expand and renovate, that money could not perhaps be used for that purpose. I'm concerned only that town funding go to repairing a structure which we seem to have by inadvertence adopted as a town asset. Thank you.
I think we've exhausted discussion on the amendment. So the question is this. You would favor or not of deleting three words, those three words being renovating, expanding, and and? All those in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I think the noes have it unless we would like a show of hands. All right. So the article is left unchanged. Any further discussion on Article 12? Well, so is there any further discussion on Article 12? And seeing none, Suzanne would like to move that we restrict reconsideration on 11 and 12. All those in favor of doing that, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. So we won't discuss 11, 12, or 35. Moving on to Article 13, municipal revaluation. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $200,000 to meet our constitutional and statutory requirement to perform a municipal revaluation assessment. To ensure assessments are at and true value at least every fifth year for RSA 75 colon 8A. Revaluation was last performed in 2015. Passage of this article will authorize funds from the town's unassigned fund balance to be used to pay for the revaluation. This expenditure will not result in any increase in the 2020 tax rate. The estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is $0. It's recommended unanimously by the Selectmen, the Budget Committee, and a majority vote will be required for it to pass in March. And Lynda, you're going to address Article 13.
Yes, I am. Article 13 is asking the voters to approve the use of the general fund surplus cash, which is called the unassigned fund balance. The general fund surplus cash is accumulated from unspent prior year's expenses, along with any additional revenues after setting the tax rate. The Board of Selectmen put forward this warrant article for $200,000 to cover the cost of the town's property reevaluation, which is required by law, instead of including the $200,000 in the 2020 operating budget. Based on the December 31st, 2018 town audit, the general fund's unassigned fund balance was $2,700,000. was $2,704,271. By using the general fund's unanticipated, unassigned fund balance, this warrant article will have no impact on the 2020 tax rate.
Any discussion on Article 13? Mark, are you getting up to say something? Are you going to comment on 13? We're going to have a technical change to this.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we add on, let's see, it'll say perform municipal reevaluation assessment to ensure assessments are at the full, which is left out in true value of at least every fifth year. And so I'm asking the amendment to be adding full after at.
All right, is there a second? Any discussion regarding that technical amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Put that in there. John, you had a discussion on Article 13.
Yes, I have one concern here. The expenditure will not result in any increase to the tax rate. I've had discussion with several of the Selectmen, and it does have the effect. Maybe not this year, but there's money not left available to offset taxes. So I just, I just dislike that. I'm not going to bother, bother trying to get an amendment, but I'm putting on notice I dislike deceptive statements.
Your point is well taken. Any other discussion on Article 13? Seeing none, we will move on to Article 14, accrued lead time expendable trust fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to establish an accrued lead time expendable trust fund per RSA 3119A to cover costs of unused earned time for union and non-union employees upon voluntary or involuntary separation from employment or retirement. Said fund to be under the custody of the trustees of the trust funds, furthermore, to name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. The estimated tax rate impact is five cents per thousand assessed valuation. It unanimously recommended by the Selectmen, was recommended by the Budget Committee. We're going to vote a six to one to one. Majority vote will be required in order for it to pass. And Lynda, you're up on this one as well.
I'm going to pass it over to Paul.
I got this one. Thanks, Randy.
Good handoff.
So, thank you. Simply, this is two things, two things that make, make this something to consider. Number one is our employees bank vacation time. When they leave, they have an opportunity to get a check for that accrued vacation time. There's two ways that that can be paid for. You can take it out of the operating budget, which means you can't backfill the employee until you pay off that, that encumbrance. If that person happens to be in the highway department, your road might not get plowed. Or you can set up a, a little accrual fund, and that's what this, this warrant article is about. This is something that our auditor has given us some coaching on for the past few years. He said, you know, you really need to think about putting some, putting some funds into this account. So this is off to a good start, and this is what, what we're asking you to give consideration to. Thank you.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 15, town road upgrades. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $850,000 for the purpose of upgrading town roads and drainage systems. The appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 3276 and shall lapse on December 31, 2021, or upon the completion of the project, whatever first occurs. The tax rate impact for 2020 is .425 cents per thousand. It's unanimously recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. Majority vote is required in order for it to pass in March. And Brad, you're going to address this?
Yes, thank you, Randy. The town has 67 and a half miles of roads. The Public Works Department has a long-term plan which evaluates the road condition and suggests different repair strategies, such as a complete rebuild, shims and overlays, or chip seals. I'd like to ask for your support on this article, and I'll now turn this over to Dave Ford for further explanations.
Thank you, Brad. This is what we consider our favorite project. Everyone loves to have their road paved. So we know the problem, it's there. The solution is putting money into it. This year, we're looking at doing Bryant Road, which is a, about a mile around, that's a mistake, it's not 2,000, it's almost over 5,000 feet. And we're looking at putting that out to bid, so it's a very costly project. Allen Road, we're looking at doing in-house, where we also be reclaiming, grading, putting a lot of drainage into it. And then Pine Street and Laney Street, we're just looking at completing the overlay on Pine Street that we started last year. And Laney Street, we have about 400 feet that needs to get done. This budget has been trimmed to 850,000 based on discussions with the Selectmen, and that is where we're at. And I would be more than happy to answer questions, but I am moving quickly because this is one that usually doesn't get a lot of controversy, but more than happy to answer any questions on the topic.
Any questions or comments? Suzanne?
David, last year, we did the similar thing of a two-year project, funding for two years. What projects didn't you get completed last year, and how much money is left over?
All the projects were done. The only one that's left is North Wolfboro Road, which needs an overlay, and there was some drainage money we had for BMPs on Potridge Road. So the only unspent money is, is that money for the drainage, which we didn't have the wetland permit, so we couldn't do it. We'll do that first thing in the spring. So there's not much money left from the appropriation last year.
Okay, so this is the pre-plan, prepaid plan that you like to go with now as compared to encumbering the funds to finish off, say, the top coat or something on a project?
I don't think I-
It's prepaying. We're giving you money to finish work in the next year, so we prepay.
Does anyone, I don't understand the question. I need help there, I'm sorry.
That's how I look at it.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Article 16, the 2020 operating budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or is amended by the vote of the first session for the purposes set forth that ran totaling $28,43,555. Should this article be defeated, the operating budget should be $27,886,886, which is the same as last year's operating budget, with certain adjustments required by the previous action of the town or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with the provisions of RSA 4013, 10 and 16 to take up the issue of revised operating budget only. The estimated tax rate impact for this is $5.34 per thousand assessed valuation. It's recommended unanimously by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. A majority vote will be required in order for it to pass, and I understand that, Paul, you're going to address this one.
Thank you, Randy. So this year's general fund budget, as you'll see, is up, I believe it's 1.13%. A couple of things that we all, Budget Committee and Selectmen agreed to work hard on was to make sure that compensation for our, our teams was, was done appropriately, contractually. That's a must-do. We did that, and that's in the budget. There, for the most part, I think people in the departments, I'd say in, in large part, everybody, and you'll see in every department, did a pretty darn good job trying to toe the line. Some things we didn't fix, and some things we're probably going to want to fix next year, so that's just the way budgets work. Sometimes you win, sometimes you don't. But I think it was a collegial effort with the Budget Committee, and I think we, we accomplished a lot. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. McDonald.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I want to thank Mr. O'Brien for his comments, and he has left the heavy lifting to me tonight. Okay, when we got started, the Selectmen and the Town Manager had some guidelines that they set for the department heads, and one of them was the discretionary budget totals limited to a targeted zero increase over the 2019 budget. Some of the exceptions were contractual obligations, legal requirements, or the cost of collective bargaining agreements. Discretionary funds included the cost of fuel oil, diesel fuel and gasoline. When we first got the, the budget, the department heads requested $28,534,000. Town Manager dropped it down to $28,387. The Board of Selectmen dropped that down to $28,162, and the Budget Committee after meeting, we dropped it down to $28,43,555. Some of the increases or decreases, the cost of salaries increased by 3.4% or $224,100. This year also included a 53rd week, pay week in 2020, which accounts for about a 2% increase over 2019. All of those salary increases were voted last year through a warrant article for the police and the, the town employees. The cost of health insurance coverage increased by 4.2%. Cost of dental insurance coverage stayed the same. Due to the increases in the, the pay, the retirement and payroll taxes increased, and the cost for workers' compensation increased as a result of more accurately classifying employees and the jobs that they do. Now, if you look at this first slide, this is for the executive, executive budget, you're going to see a highlighted section where it goes payroll, cable, channel, insurance. As we go through the budget, those are the main drivers or increases for each department's budget. An executive department budget was $377,518 for 2019, and it's now up to $389,566, $566 for a total increase of $12,048. If you go down to the zoning board, you'll see the 2019 numbers and the 2020 numbers, and we've got a decrease of $2,042. Go to the planning board, we've got a decrease of $15,221. And we go over to the town clerk, and you'll see an increase of $32,643. We have a couple additional elections this year, and that's what's driving the cost of the, the town clerk's budget up. Slide down to the finance department, we've got a decrease of $65,235. Assessing department, decrease of $25,521. Tax collector budget is an increase of $31,914. Planning board budget is an increase of $12,019. The booster building, an increase of $13,219. Cemetery budget was a decrease of $5,779. Go down to technology, we've got an increase of $13,228. Misalating operating expenses stayed level funding at $5,500. Go over to the fire and rescue department, we've got an increase of $63,587. Public safety, police department budget, an increase of $86,398. Code enforcement, we have an increase of $3,339. Communications budget is up $45,241. Emergency management is down $3,451. Public safety building, an increase of $1,869. DPW administration has a decrease of $3,476. Highway and streets, an increase in the budget of $48,559. Public works garage, a decrease of $21,348. Public works grounds and maintenance, an increase of $111. And we move into solid waste, we've got an increase of $63,508. Health officer budget, an increase of $267. Animal control budget, an increase of $810. Agencies, we have a decrease of $2,711. Welfare budget, we have a decrease of $19,021. Parks and administration, a decrease of $1,854. Park maintenance, a decrease of $6,196. Beaches, an increase of $2,062. Abenaki, an increase of $9,842. Hockey rink stayed the same. Hockey rink programs, an increase of $1,187. Community center budget was a decrease of $742. Library budget was an increase of $5,179. Patriotic purposes, we had an increase of $280. The fireworks budget went up $2,000. Libby Museum budget went up $694. Clark House, we had an increase of $630. We'll go down to conservation. Conservation commission, a decrease of $338. Economic development stayed the same. Okay, debt service, the budget was decreased by $10,628. Intercompany transfers was a decrease of $25,808. Capital outlay budget was a decrease of $83,577. So here's the proposed summary of the general fund increases. The overall increase to the general fund operating fund budget was $158,509. Overall increase on a percentage basis is 1.13. As you can see, the increases are in the salaries and in the benefits, and all those salaries were voted on, you folks, last year on a warrant article, and the benefits are established through the, through the contract, through the agreements with the employees. So we've got a total increase of $158,509. I'm going to let Troy, our finance director, explain this graph that he did. I find it very confusing, so hopefully he can do a good job explaining it.
Thank you very much. So the solid line that you see is the trend from back from 2009, the change of year over year of the operating budget. That's the percentage of change. So we started in 2009 of an 8.4% increase, where we are at 2020 is a 1.13% increase. Dotted line that you see is a two-year moving average. So as we move forward each year, it's taking the average of those two years. So you could see where the, the trend was for the, for the two-year average for 2020 would be just north of 2%, and where we are coming in on a trend line is 1.13%. So we're coming in below our, our historical average.
Thank you, Troy. Okay, we'll move on to the water enterprise fund. That stayed the same at 3,000. Water distribution budget, an increase of $24,692. Water treatment plant, we had an increase of $5,010. Water enterprise funded by fees and other revenue, had an increase of $37,500. Electric administration, we have an increase of $170,734. Electric distribution, an increase of $113,267. Electric generation, for the total budget, we have a decrease of $356,188. Electric technology, that stayed the same at 3,000. Electric capital outlay, that's a decrease of $38,000. Electric technology total budget, 3,000. Electric technology capital outlay total budget, 100,000 this year, and this year $38,000 decrease. We'll move over to sewer technology, that stayed the same at 3,000. Sewer collection, that budget went up $15,090. Going out to the enterprise fund, we have a decrease of $3,283. Popwell and total budget is a decrease of $45,147. Capital outlay, that stayed the same, and actually, that was an increase of $9,999. So if you look at the proposed overall budget increases with the capital outlays, general fund is up $158,509, or 1.13% over last year. Water enterprise fund is up $17,817, or a 0.98 increase from last year. Electric enterprise fund- Electric enterprise fund is a decrease of $110,187, for a decrease of 1.09%. Sewer enterprise fund is up $11,807, for an increase of 0.68. Pop well and enterprise fund, a decrease of $35,148, or it's down 12.45%. So the total budget is up $42,798, or 0.15% over 2019. Now, if we throw in all the warrant articles, total $33,733.98. Leicester revenues of $23,377.14. Then we've got overlay of $75,000, warrant credits of $232,500, for a net town appropriation of $10,667,184. Then if you drop down, we've got the property evaluation with utilities. And then go down a little bit farther, and I mentioned the tax rate for 2019 was $6.09. The estimated tax rate for 2020 will be $5.34. That's a decrease of 75 cents per thousand, a rate change of minus 17.78%. So how is that going to affect your property? Okay, if you own a $100,000 home, you should save $75. If you own a $200,000 home, you should save $150. And if you own a $300,000 home, you should save $225 on your town year taxes. But that, of course, won't count with the school or with the county. This is strictly your town bill. Any questions?
Any questions for John or the selectmen regarding the budgets? Tom?
I'm a numbers guy. At the very end, where you talked about this year's tax rate at $5.34 per thousand, and last year was $6.09, I get that as a 12.3% decrease, not a 17.78 decrease.
Troy, can you address that?
We can calculate it right now. Please answer us. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Any other comments or questions? John?
I just have one thing to add, Mr. Moderator. I want to thank all the department heads and the board of the selectmen, the town manager. Everyone worked really hard to get this budget. We understand it's been a couple of tough years, and I would just ask for the voters to support it. We too are taxpayers, and we too have, we don't want to take a lot of money out of our pocket, but we understand that we're going to make a commitment to our employees and to our buildings and to all the things that we enjoy in town, the beaches, Abenaki, and many of the other things that we do, the tennis courts. So I would just ask for you folks to accept this budget and approve it when we vote this upcoming March. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, and I think it's important that the taxpayers also understand that while the estimated tax rate is $5.34, when the tax rate is set, we will have had a reevaluation done. So there's going to be a shifting of numbers based on that reassessment occurring and then the setting of the tax rate, just so you're aware.
Any other comments, questions? It's been moved to restrict reconsideration. Articles 13 through 16, all those in favor of restricting reconsideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, we will not reconsider. Articles 11 through 16 or 35, and if there's no further discussion, we'll move on to Article 17, which is recreational dock repairs. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purposes of reconstructing and upgrading finger docks A through D per the town's dock asset management study performed by Ty &amp; Bond engineers, $170,000 of which will be raised via general taxation. $130,000 of funding will come from a United States Fish and Wildlife Service Tier One Boat Infrastructure Grant through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. The appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RS-8327, Roman numeral six, and shall lapse on December 31, 2021, or upon completion of the project whichever occurs first. The estimated tax rate for 2020 is .085 cents per thousand, unanimously recommended by the selectmen, recommended by the budget committee, a vote of seven to one, and a majority vote will be required and one of four to pass in March. Dave Senegal, you going to address this one, Dave?
Yes, this are the existing docks that we have right now at Dockside. It says nothing to do with expansion of our docks this coming year. We'll see later on that's going to be upcoming. But David is going to explain to us, David Ford, as far as what we're doing. If any of you have been down there recently or this past summer, you'll see that our dock system has coming apart, so to speak. It's all pressure-treated. We've had a lot of problems with splinters, people sliding on it mostly. So you can imagine that it's time for us to do something with the top deck and the posts. And there are a few of the areas that our engineers looked at where the caps on top of the posts that support the dock system also need some repair. David?
Thank you, Dave. This is a picture, and we call it recreational docks, but technically, there are some people doing business on these docks, and they also can refer to as the finger docks. But as we look at this picture, we have docks A, B, and C, and D to the right side as we're looking at it. This project is looking at those four specific docks. And then on the continuing, we have E, F, and G, which are also considered the recreational finger docks. That's not included in this grant application that we're going after. And then, so again, the problem, like Dave said, the docks are about 20 years old. We also have some other issues with the seawall and with the Mount Washington dock. But technically, we're going to put those problems off because the biggest problem right now is the residential docks. And it's just a matter of time and age. We had done some detailed inspections by Ty &amp; Bond and developed a long-term plan. We did some emergency repairs two years ago, and we have now looked at this big project. And the reason we're pushing it this year is because there's a grant which is called the Boat Infrastructure Grant, which is specifically for docks with boats like this. And we have an application in. I've called recently, and it looks really good. So we're very optimistic about that grant. And this is kind of looking at the phased approach we're looking at. So we're taking the finger docks Phase One, which are docks A, B, C, and D. We already have $100,000 in our capital reserve account, so we're not, that's there. What we're looking tonight, and what we're going to be looking to vote in a month from now, is to raise $170,000, which will then be used to match money going after this federal grant, the big grant, of $130,000, bringing the total project to $400,000. And that would do all the repairs, replacement, as Dave explained, this is not just replacing the deck, it's replacing everything from the piles up. Structurally, they don't meet code. While we haven't had a problem, we had to put signs up the last few years just warning that we can't have more than 10 people for 10 linear feet. But so this is a structural issue, it's a safety issue, and they're at the end of their useful life. We anticipate coming back next year, looking for additional money because we're going to go for the big tier grant again and finish the residential docks. And then the dock expansion would be a separate grant. And that's something that there's a, they have a Tier Two grant, and they have more money for Tier Two grants, and those are for bigger boats, and that would be more applicable for the dock expansion. Right now, we just have a placeholder for 2021. We're not sure how that's going to move forward. And then the last phase is the wall repairs, and those wall repairs are, again, this is a very old facility, there needs to get done, it's not critical, but it does need to get done, so we have it listed that could be out, and that would not qualify for this Boat Infrastructure Grant because it would be more infrastructure dealing with the bulkhead. So our, right now, we're hoping to complete the bid documents, have a bid in the summer, and then we would, again, if everything is approved and the grants are available, we would start work in the fall, and actually work on the project over the wintertime when it's frozen, and we can get contractor in so he won't leave on me. We get him stuck there for the winter, so we make sure we get it done. So that's the plan, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions about the dock project.
Any questions or comments regarding this article? Thanks, Dave. Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 18. Water quality improvements. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $55,000 for the purchase of providing matching funds for the following projects. Sinobacteria committee activities, $15,000. Rust Pond Stormwater BMP Design Dredging Survey, $20,000. New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Section 319 Grant for the Lake Wentworth Watershed Phase Four Project, $20,000. For watershed education and outreach and water quality testing, the appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RS-83276, and shall lapse on December 31, 2021, or upon completion of the project whichever occurs first. The estimated tax rate increase for tax rate impact, sorry, for 2020 is .028 cents per thousand assessed valuation, unanimously recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee, and a majority vote will be required for it to pass in March. And Linda, you going to start us off with this one?
I am. Article 18 is addressing water quality concerns after the sinobacteria outbreak in Warner Harbor in the Cary Beach area in late August and early September 2018. The Board of Selectmen established the Sinobacteria Committee to address water quality concerns in all lakes having shores in Wolfboro because of the health issues associated with sinobacteria outbreaks and the importance of lakes in the lives of Wolfboro citizens and their visitors. I'm going to hand this presentation over to Matt.
Thank you very much, Linda. Matt Sullivan, Director of Planning and Development. As you can see, we have three primary focus areas for this year's water quality improvement request as part of the warrant articles. But you may recognize this article and a lot of its language from 2019, during which we actually had three efforts that we focused on. Those three efforts were providing matching funding for the Wentworth Watershed Association Implementation Plan, that was Phase Three grant funding through that program. And we constructed actual BMPs. And when we say BMPs, we're referring to stormwater best management practices. So I'll show you a picture of what one of those looks like in just a second. But additionally, we provided match funding through the Winter Harbor Watershed Plan as well, and that was the town of Wolfboro's portion of funding for that, as it is a multi-town effort. So first, this funding provides match funding for grants. Additionally, the Board of Selectmen, working, as Linda said, off of the sinobacteria concerns that were manifested in 2019, formed the Sinobacteria Committee. And that committee has been working diligently over the last year, both on outreach, education, testing, and really anything related to water quality within the town of Wolfboro, and they'll be continuing to work on that throughout this year as well. Lastly, there was a specific focus on water quality testing, thanks to Warren Mira and others for leading that effort, working with UNH to continue water quality testing, not just in Lake Wenupisaki, but in other water bodies within the community. That work is scheduled to continue. But before I go into the 2020 work program, I just wanted to show you what your money looks like on the ground, and I know Rich Massey's here this evening, I believe this is his drone picture, I wanted to provide this. This is actual construction work that happened in partnership with Camp Bernadette. On the, in the middle of the picture, you'll see those two dark areas. These are actual stormwater BMPs, they're very large in size. For scale, you can see the chapel building there. This system is intended to handle runoff that's coming down the paved driveway right towards the shore of Lake Wentworth and contributing to significant erosion and sedimentation issues. We constructed these BMPs through the winter and fall of last year, we're very excited about them. Again, that's a huge change for the camp, but this is the kind of construction work that this article funding is actually going towards, and we're looking to continue that into 2020. So in 2020 specifically, we have yet three more projects. First is continuing to fund the Sinobacteria Committee's activities at a level of $15,000. That's primarily split between two projects within that. Again, continuing the water quality testing program, continuing to coordinate with UNH and our trained volunteers to continue the testing work that's been happening, which is critical to monitoring lake and water body health. Additionally, we'll be working to actually craft a website, which I know Paul O'Brien's communications team is actively working on right now, really intended to spread information, materials, and other critical updates related to water quality. That website is expected to be released sometime in spring, I believe, or summer of 2020. But I know that Paul's team is actively working on that. The second project is related to Rust Pond. We've been working actively with the Rust Pond Association on two potential projects, and that's why you'll see both of those suggested here. The first of which is a stormwater BMP along Route 28 adjacent to what we refer to as the Rust Pond Boat Launch. You may remember that funding was appropriated for that project on the northern side of the road in a prior year. We ultimately ran into some ownership issues there, and therefore, we'll be working on an alternative BMP design, hopefully with the association, to deal with some of that runoff coming down Route 28 in that area and through some of the developed area also to the south of that road. Additionally, if you aren't familiar, and I'll show you a picture in just a second, there is a dredging issue within Rust Pond, particularly what's referred to as the North Inlet. We are looking to do some dredge survey work, really as part of Phase One to actually resolving the issue that's happening there. And lastly, we'll be continuing to provide match funds, in this case, for a new Phase Four grant for the Wentworth Watershed Association. This is implementation. We'll be working on BMP design and construction for three sites, Pierce Camp Birchmont, Route 28 Roadside, and Fern Avenue, and I'll show you those in just a second. But some visuals, this is the Route 28 Roadside BMP right here. Additionally, you can see, again, the boat launch is to the right side of the picture as you look at that within that purple circle. We hope to design some BMP within the right-of-way or public space, or potentially enter into agreement with some of the private folks there as well. On the right-hand side, you see the Rust Pond North Inlet issue, and it's difficult to see the issue at this scope. I have sort of circled it there in the water, but like anything, I think a picture tells a thousand words. We look back to April 99 at this site, and there are a lot of environmental factors contributing here that we're going to study. You can see we have a nice picturesque view of the water here. Looking forward to even 2006, we have a lot of sediment, there's some vegetation growth, we've essentially created new land in that Rust Pond inlet. And we're hoping, what we're hoping to do is study the reason for this issue and potentially address some of the concerns up gradient towards the high school that might be contributing to it. Again, working proactively with the Rust Pond Association to do that. Finally, I just wanted to reference the three specific projects as part of the Phase Four Grant. Harvey Brook, the Fern Ave site and Camp Birchmont, as I mentioned before. We have already begun preliminary BMP design as part of our Phase Three project, actually, that was funded out of 2019, and started to develop some conceptual BMPs that, again, we're going to take to final design, permitting, and construction in 2020, and potentially in 2021, hence the non-lapsing nature of this warrant article. I think Dave Ford and others have spoke to the importance of water quality in the town of Wolfboro in all water bodies. We feel this request is perhaps the most diverse in nature that we've had for water quality funding, I think, and we hope that you get your support on March 10. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matt or any discussion on this article? Thanks, Matt, very thorough. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of providing architectural and engineering fees for public safety services facility planning. The appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RS-83276, and shall lapse on December 31, 2021, or upon completion of the project whatever occurs first, whichever occurs first. The estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is 5 cents per thousand, unanimously recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. And Dave Senegal, you going to address this one?
I'm going to start it, yes. We have, for a few years, been working with an architectural firm to figure out what we can do with the current public safety building. We have, we came up with three different plans. We've also looked at different properties, vacant lots, buildings that are in existence, along with some we own, and still have not come up with a plan that everybody is really happy with. Fortunately, that may be what happens, but I'll turn the rest of it over to Jim for some more information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the chairman had stated, we've done a lot of work to this point. We've done some test fitting on the existing site. That came back with some options that the price tag was a little shocking to everybody. We decided that we needed to continue the work in due diligence, and we've been looking at alternative sites. We've had, been having some struggles with finding alternative sites to be able to do this, whether it's a standalone public safety building, whether... this, whether it's a standalone public safety building, whether it's a standalone police station, whether it's a standalone fire station, whatever it may be. We're currently continuing to work with La Valley Bresninger, and we're hoping to bring some progress reports to the Board of Selectmen in the next couple of months. The problem going forward is we've expended all the funds in the Capital Reserve Fund, so we, we have no funding to continue our work. So moving into 2020, we're requesting these funds so that we can continue to work with the Board of Selectmen, identify what the path going forward is going to be for this, for this facility, whether it's going to be standalone, or if we're going to break the two entities up. Look at some conceptual designs, select some sites, and get additional guidance from the stakeholders involved. And the goal moving forward is to develop a conceptual set of plans and a budget that we, as taxpayers, will be able to absorb. If there's any further questions, we'll be happy to try to answer them for you.
Any questions or comments regarding this article? Dave?
Yeah, the other thing we have done over the last two years as well is we have gone out and looked at new police fire stations. We looked at the one in Farmington, looked one in Tuckenborough, we looked at some other facilities that we thought we might be interested in. We found some good things and some bad things. One of them I thought was pretty funny when we were at the Farmington Station. Our police chief said, "There's no way that our officers can walk down these corridors with all the stuff they have on their belts. They'd be rubbing the walls." We said, "What?" Well, think about it. A police officer with all the stuff on his belt, plus trying to hang on to somebody going down a corridor? He was right. Three-foot corridors don't work. So that was one thing that we, we brought out of one of the times we went out and looked. So those are the kinds of things that we're running into. And every time you do that, you expand the size of the building, which requires more space. So those are the things we're dealing with.
Mike? Michael Hunter. When this project was first presented to the Capital Improvements Program, the request was for $150,000, which we recommended onto the Board of Selectmen and to the Budget Committee. Can you still accomplish the scope of work for $100,000 that was originally priced out at $150,000?
That's an excellent question, Mike. At this point, we believe to accommodate the work that we need to complete in the year 2020, we believe the $100,000 will accommodate the work we need done.
Dave?
Yes, part of that, Mike. When we first started this whole thing, we went to the Police Department and the Fire Department and said, "What do you need for space?" And our architects that we use, that's what they do, is they design police stations and fire stations. There are certain requirements that they need for space allocations, such as locker rooms or sleeping space or whatever, completely different than when we built the police fire station we have now. So the regulations are quite different, and that's the issue we're having, is trying to get everything onto one lot. We did have, I think, as it says in here, there were three different proposals for renovating where we are right now. Some of us didn't think those renovations looked very nice, number one. And some of it was the fact that we didn't really have the right amount of space, although everybody was happy with the space they got. Because we also have a communications section of this, along with the police and fire. So standalone, if we stand alone, then we have two separate buildings, two separate expenses, two heating systems and so forth that just keeps rolling along. So what we're trying to do is to keep everybody in one building. And we're having a hard time doing that. Here we are. That's who we need the money for. All the preliminary stuff is done as far as assessment of space as to what we need. You know, you set it up into blocks, and the blocks, you just keep building them, and you come up with a certain amount of space. That part's done. So we need to have the architects go out now and find the piece of land or building or whatever that we can occupy. So the basics are done. We just need to finalize the plans.
Any further discussion? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move to Article 20. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $175,000 to be placed in the existing Public Works Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. Said fund should be placed under the custody of the trustees of the trust fund. Furthermore, the Selectmen have been designated as agents to expend this Capital Reserve Fund. The estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is .088 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. It unanimously recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote will be required for it to pass in March." Dave Bowles, you're going to address this one?
This is one of several requirements. Rather than having a large capital expenditure for a six-figure, sometimes strong six-figure piece of equipment, a Capital Reserve Fund allows us to put money in on a yearly basis, accumulating it, and then when we want to buy it, the supportive Selectmen figure out this and also fire engines and other supplies, like we need to replace this in 2021, 2022. We have a schedule. But when that happens, the money is there because we've been paying in on it year by
Any further comments or questions?
And Dave Ford will present.
Okay. So here we are. The problem, again, we just talked about it, is the fleet tried not to spike the tax rate. We have over $3 million of equipment. We set up the Capital Reserve long, a long time ago. This year, we have an inventory, which I'll show you in a second. This year, we were looking at replacing a one-and-a-half-ton plow truck and our trackless sidewalk tractor. Again, we have increased this from last year was 170, so we are increasing it by $5,000. This is the inventory, which is hard to read, but just all the equipment we do have there, that's all listed. And this is the schedule we're looking at. It does go out 20 years, and we are looking at, there were some issues where we finally got resolved with regards to how much money is in there. We got, we fell behind a little bit. We're just getting our invoices into the trustees. We've got that all squared away, so we know where we're at. And so the fund will run down very close, small, but we'll make sure we won't drain it. But you can see this year, with the expenditures and with the money, we have enough to cover those two vehicles.
I'd be more than happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions, comments, discussion? All right, seeing none, that was the first of six Capital Reserve Funds, so hopefully we can move through these fairly quickly. The next one is to see if, the Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $196,000 to be placed in the existing fire trucks and apparatus replacement Capital Reserve Fund. Said fund should be under the custody of the trustees of the trust funds. Furthermore, the Selectmen have been designated agents to expend this Capital Reserve Fund. The estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is .098 cents per thousand. It's been unanimously recommended by the Selectmen and Budget Committee." And Dave Bowles, you're going to address this one again?
This is the most significant piece of equipment we have. Hook and ladder truck costs more than a half million dollars. And so rather than saying, "Okay, this year we need a new one," and then five years from now or 10 years from now, we need another new one, this enables us to pay year by year as in other things, so that we're not hit with a large amount all at once. And this has worked out very well.
Do you have any further follow-up on Article 21? Any comments?
I believe Chief Ganci is here to speak on behalf of this.
Like the other departments, the Fire Department has Capital Reserve Plan. We have seven fire vehicles, pieces of fire apparatus, the two boats, off-road equipment and a snowmobile. This, the next item for replacement is the aerial, which is going to be 30 years old. It is due for replacement in 2022. The estimated cost to replace it is 1.365. It would be a piece of equipment that will probably have a life span of approximately 25 years. Can you answer any questions that you have?
Any questions for the chief or any comments? Looks like you're all set. Thank you. Article 22, Building Maintenance and Capital Reserve Fund. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in the existing building maintenance Capital Reserve Fund, established for the purpose of making needed repairs and performing needed maintenance to the town's building facilities. Said fund should be under the custody of the trustees of the trust funds. Furthermore, the Board of Selectmen have been designated as agents to expend this Capital Reserve Fund. The estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is .026 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. Unanimously recommended by the Board of Selectmen and recommended by the Budget Committee on a vote of seven to one." And Dave Senegal is going to address this. Dave?
Yeah, as it says in this warrant article, it's a Capital Reserve Fund. We started to have some funds available for buildings like this one that needs repairs off and on. Also, we have, as you know, I think it's 26 or more buildings that we own in need maintenance. So this is a chance to start a Capital Reserve Fund for that purpose.
Any comments, questions? Thanks, Dave. Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 23. "To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to establish a Bridge Falls Path Lighting Capital Reserve for the purpose of replacement of the existing pole lighting along the Bridge Falls Path from Depot Square to Route 28 Centristree. Said fund should be under the custody of the trustees of the trust funds. Furthermore, to authorize the Board of Selectmen's agents to expend from this Capital Reserve Fund, the estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is .01 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. It's been unanimously recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee." And Linda, if you're going to address this, you're up.
Yes. Article 23 is addressing a problem with the lighting on the Bridge Falls Path. Over the last few years, the town has had to spend funds to try to repair the lights and light poles on the Bridge Falls Path from the railroad station to Route 28. The establishment of this Capital Reserve Fund will allow the town to start saving for the replacement of the lightened poles. And with this, I will turn it over to Christine Collins.
Thank you. Bridge Falls Path, we, has been a very utilized path with bikes, people walking, all kinds of people are using the path. And we, last year, we went through with an electrician. We kind of looked at all the poles. As you can see, they're a little outdated. We went through and fixed everything we possibly could, so all the lights are working. And now we're just planning for the future. It looks like it's a 20-year-old system that is going to need to be upgraded, and we're just looking for, to be proactive, so we're ready for what needs to happen. And while we're fixing the electrical system, just looking at the poles to see if there's anything that can be aesthetically pleasing, and also to capture a wider area if we need more lighting in that area.
Thank you. Any questions? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, would someone like to move that we not reconsider Articles 17 through 23?
No.
Second? All those in favor of restricting reconsideration of Articles 17 through 23, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All that passes, we'll move on to Article 24. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,750 to be placed in the existing Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund, previously established for the purpose of purchasing or repairing the snowmaking equipment, the groomer, light poles, and mechanical, electrical, and safety equipment related to the Abenaki Ski Area. Said fund should be under the custody of the trustees of the trust funds. Furthermore, the Board of Selectmen have been designated to expend from this Capital Reserve Fund. The impact on the tax rate is less than a penny per thousand, been unanimously recommended by the Selectmen and by the Budget Committee on a vote of seven to zero to one." And Linda, you're going to address this?
Yes. Article 24 is seeking vote, asking voters to add funds to the existing Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund. This Capital Reserve Fund was established as a saving account for future replacement of the town's ski slope equipment and the donation, the donated snowmaking equipment from the Friends of Abenaki. And I'll turn it over to Christine.
Thank you. This fund was established to help fund things that aren't necessarily in the budget, so bigger things. A perfect example would be the groomer, the rope that we get lasts typically around three to five years, just depends. So these are things that we have been saving for, and we have, I don't know if we're showing a video of the next one? So we kind of put it out by year, so we know when we're going to be expending that money. If you have not been to Abenaki Skieria, even if you're not a skier, you should come over and see it. It's a great facility in our town, and it's being utilized more and more every day. So I would hope you would support this.
Any questions or comments regarding this article? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 25. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in the existing dispatch equipment Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of replacement of the dispatch console or other related equipment installation and related expenses. Said fund should be under the custody of the trustees of the trust funds. Furthermore, the Board of the Selectmen have been designated agents to expend this Capital Reserve Fund. The estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is .025 cents per thousand, unanimously recommended by the Board of Selectmen, the Police Commission, and the Budget Committee." And Brad, you're going to start us off on this one?
Yes, thank you, Randy. Just quickly, the, the current system is antiquated and is basically no longer supported by the vendors. I ask for your support for this article. I'll turn this over to Chief Rondo for further details.
Thank you, sir. Chief Dean Rondo will provide. Brad has essentially hit the nail on the head. This is a repeat from last year. What we're trying to do is save a little bit of money every year, so we don't go in a sticker shock when we have to purchase a new system. I suspect that the current system we have will probably get us at least into 2022. And substitute questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief or the Selectmen on this one? Yes, sir?
Hi. I'm Seamus Oskali. I have a question specific to this. My question is approximately, how much money is in all of these Capital Reserve Funds? And what kind of return does the town get on the money while it sits in the funds before it gets spent?
Anybody want to address that?
So those funds are managed by the trustees of the trust funds. I do have a document that I can get to you that outlines how much is exactly in each fund. I don't have that exact number right off the top.
I mean, just roughly, is it 5 million or?
I really wouldn't dare to guess. I haven't looked at it as far as the bottom-line number. I've looked at individual accounts as we pull funds from them, but as far as the bottom-line number, I'm not sure. But I can get that for you. Additionally, I believe it's always in the town report too, as the MS9 report.
Okay. And how is this invested before it's spent?
The trustees are in charge of the investments, and I'm not sure how they manage that.
Any further questions, comments? All right, we'll move on to Article 26. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $59,255 to purchase a new police cruiser and ancillary cruiser equipment. Said appropriation will be offset by $13,000, which represents a portion of the accumulated revenues in a special police detail revolving fund created by Article 23 in 2006, which is accumulated from special details in prior years and $46,255 from the general taxation. Additionally, to dispose of an existing cruiser by sale, auction, trade, or disposal, whichever is in the best interest of the town, and any said funds from such sale to be deposited into the town general fund. The estimated tax impact for 2020 is .023 cents per thousand. It's been unanimously recommended by the Selectmen, the Police Commission, and the Budget Committee on a vote of seven to one." And Dave Senegal is going to address this one. Dave?
Yeah, this, as the article says, there was a rotating fund set up many years ago from special detail funding from the Police Department. So they're going to offset some of the costs for this police cruiser. This includes, as it says, ancillary cruiser equipment, which include radios, the division between the front and back seat, and all the ancillary stuff that's going to be put in it is not done by our people, it's done by the state or through a radio company. So Dean, you want to explain that?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So like, like all other vehicles, police vehicles have a tendency to wear out. And though we have excellent support from the Town Works Department, and they provide all of our maintenance needs and do a great job, the issue is not mechanical. The issue becomes essentially rust. Right now, my, one of the vehicles I have for my detective is essentially rusting out. And we know it's not going to pass inspection. And therein lies the problem. Last year, we got rid of three vehicles. We retired three vehicles, that is to say. This year, for the same reason, for rust. And this year, we're going to be retiring one more. So we need vehicles to get to calls for service, right? I mean, we, that's what we need them for, right? So when you call, we can actually get there. So all levity aside, I hope you support this. This is very important. And subject to questions is all I have.
Any questions for the chief or the selectman? Any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Moving on to Article 27. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $120,000 for the purpose of purchasing a backhoe for use by the water department for general services, the amount of $120,000 should be transferred from water fund surplus. This expenditure will not result in any increase in the tax rate. This has been unanimously recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. And Lynda, if you want to start us off on this one.
Sure. There really isn't much to say other than the fact we need the backhoe. And I'll turn it over to David Ford.
There we go. I'm moving right along.
Yeah, we're going to move on.
Quickly, the water backhoe is, has heavy use. It travels on the roads. It has to clear over 300 hydrants after every snowstorm. It's there for water main breaks. We also share this equipment. We share our equipment with the highway department, even though there's separate budgets, and we try to keep track of that so there's fair sharing back and forth. Solid Waste Division has a backhoe, but that's, it's a little older, it's in much worse shape, and it is, needs some work, repair. So what we're going to do is we're going to trade in the solid waste backhoe and then pass down the water backhoe, which we did put some money into in the last couple of years. We still think it has a significant useful life. So what we'll do is we'll trade in the vehicle and that'll defray the cost of the new one for the water department. And that's the game plan. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions about that. Oh, there, oh, excuse me. We have that slipped there, which is looking at the two different pieces of equipment, the one we're trading in and the one that we're going to hold on to with the, the issues regarding the average maintenance costs and what the conditions are. With that, any questions?
Any comments or questions regarding Article 27? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Article 28. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $280,000 for the purpose of purchasing a bucket truck for use by the municipal electric department for general system maintenance and incident response. The amount of $280,000 should be transferred from the Electrical Enterprise Fund surplus. This expenditure will not result in any increase in the tax rate. It is unanimously recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. And Selectman O'Brien is up on this one.
Thank you. Yep, municipal electric needs a bucket truck. You've already paid for it through your electric bills. As you've seen with Public Works and you see with, with Barry's operation, these folks, these folks take care to not only keep these vehicles going, but they also take care to document everything they're doing with their vehicles. And this, this truck has gotten to the point where it costs more to fix than it's actually worth to, to repair it. I mean, the, it's, it's, it's passed its useful life. So I'll turn it over to you, Barry.
Thank you, Paul. This is one of our primary use vehicles. It's used daily for, for maintenance, construction, and emergency response. It is a 52-foot material handle. It's one of two bucket trucks that we own. So it's on the road every day. It will be 11 years old upon receiving the new one. You can see it has some rust conditions. We've also had some mechanical issues with this. And you can see our maintenance costs are up now close to $30,000 on this vehicle. So yeah, we appreciate your support on this. It will be purchased and funded from the electric department's unrestricted fund balance. It does not have an effect on your tax rate. We have built the cost of, of our rolling infrastructure into the existing electric rate, so it won't result in an increase in your electric rate due to that. I'd entertain any questions if you have them?
Any questions for Barry or the Selectmen? Any comments? Thank you, Barry.
If not, I thank you for your support.
On to Article 29. To see if the town will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargain agreement reached between the Board of Selectmen and Local 534 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels. The year 2020, the estimated wage increase is $38,915. The benefit increase would be $7,324 for a total increase of $46,239. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of $46,239 for the current fiscal year, such sum representing additional costs attributable to the increase in wages and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. The estimated tax rate impact for 2020 is .023 cents per thousand. This has been unanimously recommended by the Selectmen, recommended by the Budget Committee on vote of five to one to two. And Dave Senegal, you want to start us off on this one?
Yeah, this contract was asked me, is it a one-year contract that we came, came up with? There were quite a few meetings. We had a labor attorney along with the town manager, myself, I was on that committee. So we would like your support for this agreement. Again, it's a one-year contract.
And just to tie a couple loose ends up on that, there is no intention this year of adding staff to this contract. And secondly, just to put it into a little bit of perspective, this contract covers 33 employees. So when you look at the overall wage increase of 38,000, and when you add benefits in the 46, over 33 employees, the, the staff was happy with the contract, management's happy with the contract, and it appears to be a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Any comments or questions on Article 29?
Should we reconsider?
Sure.
Article 29?
So if we go back to, so it's been moved to restrict reconsideration of Articles 24 through 29. All those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we won't reconsider Articles 11 through 29 or 35. So we're narrowing the group here. On to Article 30. To see if the town will vote to raise and, let's see, the town will vote to raise it to place a conservation easement on the town-owned portion of Whiteface, Tax Map 36-1. See deed recorded at Book 305-1, page 87, with said easement to be held by the Lakes Region Conservation Trust. This has no impact on the tax rate. And Dave Bowers, you're going to start us off on this one?
This is a, this is, if I remember correctly, 1,339 feet high at its highest elevation, the highest elevation in the town of Wolfboro. It's also virgin land. It has never been developed. There's no picnic facilities or anything else on it. It's just virtually pristine. And this article allows the town to proceed getting an easement for access to it for those who might like to use it for nature purposes or wildlife and that sort of thing.
You want to add to that?
Sure. Hi, for those who don't know me, I'm Lenora Clark. I am the Chair of the Wolfboro Conservation Commission. And for those who might not be familiar with what a conservation easement is, it's a legal document that goes along with the deed of the property and protect, basically protects the land in perpetuity. In 2012, the commission received a donation of a 45-acre parcel of land up in north Wolfboro. If you can see it, that's the parcel that the arrow is pointing to. And to orient you a little bit, the dotted line there is the town line with Osiphe. Trask Mountain Road is there on the left-hand side. This was donated to us by Richard Morse. It's landlocked, it's not accessible. And in 2011, the town had completed its natural resources inventory as part of the master plan update. And the inventory identified an area that was partially contained within this parcel as one of the key scenic vistas in town. And that would be Whiteface Mountain, the highest elevation in Wolfboro. And that's what can be seen there in the middle of that slide from Brownsridge Road. The property is located within one of the largest unfragmented blocks of land within town, which provides all kinds of essential forest interior habitat for animals such as moose that need to be distanced from humans in order to survive. It provides habitat for animals that have a large home range like bear and bobcat and provides for greater, greater biodiversity. There's also a human benefit to these kind of large, unfragmented blocks of land. It enables owners to conduct economically viable timber harvests that minimizes conflict with man, between managed forest and farmland with development. And it offers recreational opportunities for residents and for tourists. So there's a boon to tourism as well. For example, there's a skidder trail off of Cowper Road up in this area that was being used by, by more experienced backcountry hikers. This region has such a large environmental impact that it attracted the attention of Moose Mountain's Regional Greenways, Lakes Region Conservation Trust, and the Land Bank of Tuftonboro, Wolfboro, which ultimately acquired a couple of abutting parcels of land. And also, the Conservation Commission acquired a conservation easement on yet another abutting parcel of land that's 42 acres. So if this warrant article is passed, we're, it's going to result in 160 acres of protected undeveloped forest land. Lakes Region Conservation Trust is going to hold the easement if it passes because being the landowner, we cannot hold our own easement. They have already raised $10,000 towards the monitoring and the stewardship of it. In 2015, the commission did build a one-mile hiking trail, not on the specific piece of property that we're talking about, but on one of the abutting parcels. And that's the view from the summit right there. So I'm here to answer any questions and I hope the voters come out and support this warrant article in March.
Thank you, Lenora. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Article 31. To see if the town will vote to, to see whether the town will vote to authorize the acceptance of privately donated gifts, legacies, and devices from businesses, individuals, and foundations to be used to assist residents who need funds to pay their electric and fuel bills, offer broken energy systems, energy efficiency measures, offer purchasing coats, boots, blankets, and other relevant needs. The funds accepted by the town should be placed in the custody of the trust funds, trustees of the trust funds, and Welfare Director is hereby appointed agent to expense said funds. Such gifts, legacies, and devises must be invested and accounted for separately from and not be commingled with amounts appropriated by the town for the same purposes, but shall be the subject, the Shelby subject to the custody investment provisions applicable to trust funds established under RSA 3119. This has no impact on the tax rate. And Nancy Hersberg was going to address this. Nancy, you're up.
Okay, thank you. So the impetus for this warrant article came from the Wolfboro Energy Committee. We were working with Barry Muccio on the net metering policy when we were surprised to learn that each month, the Wolfboro Municipal Electric Department has to deliver notices of disconnect to on average 150 homes. After then speaking with Amy Muccio, the town welfare director, we learned of oil and heat insecurity as well. And in response, the Wolfboro Energy Committee brought forth this warrant article. Federal heating assistance programs have strict limits on those who are eligible and the amount that they are able to receive. Sometimes the amount of government assistance does, is not enough to get people through the winter. Others have great need but do not meet the financial guidelines of government fuel assistance programs that don't take into account factors such as illnesses, recent job losses, a broken furnace, or who use, or the heating sources such as kerosene pellets or wood. As a result, some in our community are not able to keep the lights and heat on. Many communities have created funds to help their neighbors in need. The Wolfboro Energy Committee is proposing with this article that Wolfboro create such a fund. The funds will be used to assist those who may or may not qualify for the federal heating assistance program and to make up any shortfall. The fund will help residents who may fall just beyond the criteria for assistance through the cap programs but who are still in need of help. The funds could be used for paying electric and fuel bills, repairing broken heating systems, purchasing coats, boots, or blankets, or any other relevant needs. We would expect that funds may be donated from any number of sources, including donations from businesses, individuals, and foundations, fundraisers, or any other sources as they arise. The Wolfboro Welfare Director will administer an application process and distribute all funds per the regulations. The Welfare Director reports on a regular basis to the town manager and will report annually to the Selectmen with reconciliation in how the funds were spent. The Welfare Director is best prepared to administer the funds because she or he has close ties with those most in need in our community. She is in a position to solve issues and make decisions quickly and without having to delay a delivery or repair system in need, in need of attention. Thank you for considering the request and I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Nancy or any comments regarding Article 31? Thank you, Nancy. Move on to Article 32. To see if the town will vote to approve use of $95,000 held in a capital reserve established by Warren Article 22 at the 2017 town meeting for the purpose of matching an L-Chip grant of $130,000 awarded to the Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum for the rehabilitation of the freight shed in the center of Wolfboro, Tax Map 217, Lot 46. The Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum has raised the balance of funds from private sources for this rehabilitation phase of work, the total cost of which is estimated to be $380,000. Additional funds and pledges for repurposing the building currently estimated to be $80,000, including an ADA bathroom and an internal environmentally controlled space of the sole responsibility of the Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum, with $40,000 already on hand for this work. The installation of the museum layouts and all other museum-related material by LRM, RMM, the LRM, RMM sole cost will follow issuance of the certificate of occupancy by the town, at which time the lease between the town and LRM, RMM approved by Warren Article 24 at the 2017 town meeting will become effective. The funds held in the capital reserve will be used by the town with the approval of the Selectmen or the designee for payment of invoices properly incurred for work on the rehabilitation activity. If this warrant article is approved by the voters, it will supersede conflicting language in Warren Article 22 from the 2017 town meeting and of Warren Article 31 from the 2018 town meeting, both of which were approved by the voters. This expenditure will not result in any increase in the tax rate. This has been submitted by petition. And I was presented with a technical amendment to make a couple of changes. And I'll just read them from the floor. About nine lines down, the acronym is wrong. It says LR, LRM, and it should say LRM, RMM. And then down the very last sentence, it says this expenditure that should say this warrant article instead of this expenditure. So it's been moved and seconded to make those two technical changes. Is there any discussion regarding those technical changes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so those two changes are made. And John Sims, would you like to address the substance of this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Sims from the Lakes Regional Model Railroad Museum. The, the goal of the, the museum's project is to turn the freight shed into a model railroad museum. The, the project is in three phases. The first phase is to stabilize and rehabilitate the freight shed. The second is to repurpose it for public use. The third is to install, create and install the model railroad museum, which will be, which will talk about our railroad heritage. It'll encourage people of all ages and experience levels to operate trains on the layouts, and it'll teach technical skills to students. This is a depiction of the freight shed with the handicap access in, in place. It is rehabilitated, it is repurposed, and the passenger car alongside the loading dock is what we would like to propose for a Phase Four that is way in the future. That'll not be part of the present. That'll not be part of the present project, but the present project will lead to what you see here. The estimated cost of Phase One is $380,000. The LCHIP fund that we have been, the LCHIP grant that we have received is $130,000. It requires to be matched. The funding from the warrant article will match that with $95,000. We have private donations in cash of $140,000 already in hand, and we have short-term pledges of $45,000 that will all be redeemed before midsummer. So that means the total available for Phase One is $410,000, which is $30,000 more than we have estimated we will need. So that balance will go towards Phase Two. So we're fully funded for Phase One. Phase Two estimated cost, this is the repurposing the building, once it has been rehabilitated, stabilized, we will be building inside an air-conditioned room and an ADA bathroom. The total cost is estimated to be $80,000. We have the funding carryover of 30. We have been promised in-kind contributions from carpenters and other workers in town, which we would estimate to be $10,000 of that cost. So there's $40,000 yet to be raised, and we have the whole of 2020 to do that. And so we feel optimistic that that will be well accomplished in time. Phase Three, the estimated cost to build the model railroad itself is $125, and the model railroad is in town, and others have promised us that, once we have the building ready for them, which means after Phase Two with a certificate of occupancy, they'll put in the model railroad. So that's, this is a typical layout of what the museum might be. You can see on the left, the handicap access, the entrance is on the left. The green area is layout. You can see those things in the open space are people, and you can see the sinuous nature of it, and the bathroom, and a small office on the left of the building. This is what we are presenting to the fire department and the codes people to make sure that it meets all of the required codes, and that discussion is underway now. So warrant article 32 does two things. It emphasizes that the town's capital reserve will be used for Phase One on the program and is, in fact, used to match the LCHIP grant. And it clarifies that the town will retain control of the capital reserve funds and use them to directly pay approved invoices up to the total in the capital reserve and no further. All additional costs, if any, are the responsibility of the museum. Both of these are needed for smooth management of the freight shed program. We ask you to support both the town and the museum by voting yes on warrant article 32. Thank you. The challenge for you, the voter, 67% approval is needed for warrant article 32. In 2017, the two museum warrant articles received 72% and 82% approval. In 2018, the approval to extend the time for the museum to raise the needed funds was 79%. The funds are here, and the people are ready to go. All we need is your continuing approval to get shovels in the ground this spring. So please support warrant article 32 by voting yes on March 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any comments or questions regarding Article 32?
I encourage people to vote for this. I think we need one more museum. We had, this is a total of five museums, plus Clicky Clack Railroad, which I'm, that's not around, but anyway, it adds to our tourist appeal and our tradition and everything else, as John has said.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions regarding this article? Suzanne.
Suzanne Ryan, I'm having difficulty with the last paragraph. If this warrant article is approved by the voters, it will supersede conflicting language in warrant article 22 and warrant article 31. Is the Board of Selectmen comfortable with that language? And do you know what conflicting statements are in the warrant articles that may cause a problem?
Anybody want to jump in on that? Any comments from anybody?
As I remember, maybe John can come up, there were some dates when things were to be accomplished. Am I correct, John, on that? I'm not quite sure. But ask John, who's behind you, maybe he can clarify what he meant.
One of the things I see in one of the many warrant articles we've been dealing with in this project is, in article 22, there's something written in here that it says, "A New Hampshire nonprofit corporation, the warrant article shall be now void if the warrant article for these, for this lease of the Freight House Building fails." So is that lease, where is that lease? How is the Board of Selectmen making out with the lease?
The lease, as I recall, while referring to that, there is a, there was a warrant article asking the voters to approve leasing the building to the Model Railroad for $1 in that same year as we appropriated the '95.
And then, in the lease, would I be correct to assume that the Board of Selectmen will be working out who is responsible for what? Electric, heat, roofs, what portion of the interior we are responsible for? So has that draft of a lease been developed?
No, because we, the project hasn't, we're just now moving forward. We don't, if this warrant article fails, they would have to raise all the money before we release the $95,000, so we haven't started to work on it, other than what that warrant article said that we would lease it for them. They did come and ask us whether we would pay for the utilities, and the board said no on utilities, but we haven't written a lease out. We don't know if it's going forward.
Okay, it was going to be a 10-year lease. Is that something still in the ballpark?
That's what the, it was warrant article 24 in 2007, and I think it was for 10 years and then a chance to renew it for another 10. So if you have the 2017 annual report there, article 24 defines the lease, and that lease was approved by the voters by 82%.
Okay. We've seen this come before us in many forms and shapes and sizes, and I just have really a concern with that last paragraph. I've not ever seen a warrant article written that way, that you're going to supersede anything that we voted on before, and we don't know what it is that we're superseding as far as the particular language. So I would make a motion to strike the last paragraph.
The motion is to strike the paragraph that begins with "if this warrant" and ends with "by the voters," and leaving the last sentence, "this warrant article will not result." That's the, is there a second to that proposed amendment?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on the amendment itself?
Well, I think I've explained that we're basically giving carte blanche to the Board of Selectmen, which I don't have a problem, but the Board of Selectmen Committee and the railroad people to sit down and say, okay, well, this has to come out from article 22 in 2019, and this has to come out, and this has to go in, and we're going to keep this, and we're not going to move it. I think the voters really need a clearer picture. And one other thing, we, we, the board, you, the board, have really asked the Libby Museum to toe the line as far as you wanted a building plan, you wanted a building maintenance plan, and you wanted a business plan, and so forth. Do we have a business plan for this?
The town's not going to be responsible for their business plan. Let me go back to your warrant article 22 in 2017, was the $95,000 approved by 72% for, to be added to the project. This article 31 in 2008 was asking for the extension of time.
Right.
Those are the two that that's referring to, which is why I thought you were asking this.
Article 22 is quite lengthy, and it does have in there about relocating the building.
But this is going to, if I understand this correctly, this is going to get rid of that warrant article because this is the new provisions of that capital reserve account.
Okay. I think we're batnet flies with this, the way it's written. Thank you.
John, would you like to address the amendment? We're just on the amendment at the moment.
The issue of conflicting language, there are two items. They're both, it's the conflicts in, between the language of the earlier warrant articles and this, and where we are now that led to the existing warrant article. The previous warrant articles said that the warrant article, the capital reserve of the town's funds would be used for rehabilitating the building. We wanted to tighten that to make sure that the funds would be used on Phase One, which is where the LCHIP funds are specifically directed. LCHIP funds must only be used for rehabilitation in accordance with very strict standards. They are published by the Secretary of the Interior, and we have to follow them. This warrant article makes sure that the town's capital reserve are spent on this Phase One, which is defined as adhering to the Secretary of the Interior's standards. So the first purpose of this warrant article was to clarify that language in the earlier warrant article and make sure that we all understood that the town's capital reserve will be used for Phase One. The second reason, the second conflict that is being eliminated by this warrant article is that the original warrant article said that the museum will turn over all of the funds to the town once it has raised the balance for doing the project. This creates, this would create it as a town project, and we don't want to do that. This is a museum project where the museum is taking the responsibility of doing the estimating, doing the designs, doing the business plan, and we have done all of those things. If we were to turn the funds over to the town, then the town is managing the project, and the town would then have to go out and re-estimate all these things. They would be done according to town standards rather than private entity standards. The LCHIP money is coming to the museum. We'd have to get LCHIP's permission to turn that over to the town. So this was a provision of the earlier warrant article that I had not thought through to its conclusion. And so it's my error that this confusion arose. And so the purpose of, the second purpose of this warrant article is to clarify that, to say that the museum retains its money, it hires the contractors, it's a museum-managed project, and that the town's capital reserve will be used by the town to pay contractors on the project directly. The capital reserve funds will not be transferred to the museum. They will be held by the town, and when the museum has invoices to submit to the town for the project, the town will pay those contractors directly. So this is a way of avoiding the problem of the town paying capital reserve funds to a third party, which apparently, I'm told, has never happened, and the town would be very uncomfortable doing that. So this was the resolution of that situation. It clarifies that this is a museum-managed project, but we don't receive the capital funds into the museum. The town uses them to pay approved invoices on the project. So we felt that this was the best way of creating this model, and it's very different from the other town building rehabs that have gone on in town because each of those housed a town-owned and managed activity. This is very different in that we are an independent activity. We have drafted a lease, we have presented it earlier to the town, and we have initial feedback. The town attorney looked at that two years ago and issued his, made his comments on it. We have kept that in abeyance until we got the funding cleared, which we finally have in the last couple of months. And now we are going ahead with the lease issues. It's going to be a standard tenant landlord lease, as far as I can see, with accommodation to recognize the fact that we are putting funds into rehabbing a town building. Does that, does that answer your question? I hope so.
Any other comments or questions on the amendment? Suzanne.
Attorney Puffer, since you're here this evening, can you enlighten us on this last paragraph? If you're comfortable with it as an attorney, that the town work through this? And the second question is this, setting up this reserve on something about the third party not paying to a third party? I think I saw you kind of raise an eyebrow. Can you talk about this way, where this funding's going to work?
Mr. Sims, I believe, Mr. Sims was the author of this article, so you're, I'm going to have to accept his explanation of what the conflicts are and what the purpose of this is and what it does. I don't recall reviewing the release of, the lease. I may have, or someone else may have. I don't, I don't know. The only thing I can comment on, Suzanne, is he's the author of the petitioned article, and he's saying there were two purposes for this article, and he explained what the conflicts were and how this changed. We'll just have to take it face value, what he's saying. That would be, and his comments would be incorporated into what it does.
Might I also add that, in my limited experience at negotiating contracts and so forth, that to leave something unspecified, to leave a conflict unspecified is a very bad thing because then it'll lead to confusion and misunderstandings later. So with this language in the last paragraph, it clearly says that if there is a conflict between the earlier warrant article and this article, this article dominates. There may not be any conflict. I'm not suggesting that there is. It's just as a catch-all phrase to allow the current warrant article to take precedence if there is a conflict. And I pointed out the two conflicts that I think are there.
Right, so if I understand the article correctly and what Mr. Sims is saying, deleting the language isn't going to have any effect. This is just descriptive of what the article does. Fair?
Yes.
So if you take that language out, it really doesn't change anything, but he's described what it does, what the two conflicts are, and what the purpose of the article is, what it does. So I don't, I don't think your amendment changes anything.
Can I ask you a question?
Would you agree?
Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
Suzanne, you were kind enough to ask our counsel, and I think he's appropriately said he didn't write it. So John, question to you, who wrote this?
I did.
Okay, so you have the, I think, for the voters, you have the duty of explaining it, and I think you're leaving a few of us a little confused about what you're trying to unconflict.
I'm trying to unconflict the impression, or I'm trying to clarify that the capital reserve will be used for Phase One on the project, as we have defined it. I think that's straightforward. I mean, it was always intended to be on that work. This is just confirming and clarifying that it will be. The other, the confusion is really who manages the project? And three years ago, we didn't think through clearly enough the consequences of, you know, who's going to manage the money, who's going to manage the activities, and so forth. We just assumed it would be us. We didn't specify it. But then, the original language of the warrant article said, "We have to transfer the funds to the town." And I didn't flag on that as recognizing that was transferring management of the project to the town. And that's the second- And that's the second thing that this article does, is it clarifies that all of the money is raised by the museum, stay with the museum, and are spent by the museum on the project, and that the capital reserve is an additional funder of some of the, up to the total of ninety-five thousand dollars of proven, of approved activity on the project. But we will pay, we will send the invoice directly to the, to the town, and the town will pay it up to that ninety-five thousand.
And really not for, and I guess we're not here to coach on either side, but that last discussion points directly at sitting down and creating a lease document.
Yes.
And without that, you know, as you say, we're in the blind. You know, the other night when you visited with us, you mentioned something about fixing roofs, and so I think, I think I understand now what you're recommending in your warrant article. I think the voter needs to understand that's going to predicate or cause us quickly to sit down and have a lease document.
Yes.
So that we understand who fixes what, how this all works. Absent, and probably an operating document, and absent all of that, we could be operating in the blind.
Okay. I'll have an amendment after we get rid of this one.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the amendment itself? All right. So the amendment is to remove the last paragraph, which says, "If this warrant article is approved by the voters, it will supersede conflicting language in warrant article twenty-two from the 2017 town meeting and of warrant article thirty-one from the 2018 town meeting," both of which were approved by the voters. So that's the proposed amendment. All those in favor of that amendment, please say aye. All's opposed?
Opposed.
The noes have it. So we're back to the article. Lynda, did you have another comment?
I have an amendment. I notice it says two-thirds majority vote required. I believe it's three-fifths on changing a capital reserve fund. I want clarity on that.
You're asking me?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. It's RSA thirty-five sixteen, I believe it is. It says, "If you're changing the purpose of a capital reserve fund, you need a two-thirds vote."
A two-thirds vote, okay. I wasn't sure whether it was two-thirds or three-fifths.
So you're okay with the language as it's saying two-thirds?
Three-fifths is a bond vote.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was correct on that. My other comment on this warrant article is that I have had conversations with the town manager that if this passed exactly what Paul's talking about, we're going to have to put a document together in terms of the lease and how this is going to operate. But it didn't make sense to spend the time to put a document together until we knew whether it passed or not.
Any other comments on this article? Seeing none, we will move on to article thirty-three. Are you in favor of protecting and presenting Albee Beach on Lake Wentworth from overuse and degradation, thus to ensure protection of this town asset for generations to come by directing the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to revise the Town Beach Code Ordinance, Chapter sixteen, Beach Parking, to limit the use to Wolfboro residents and/or taxpayers, their family and residence guests? The exceptions may be, but not limited to, the following: registered guests of licensed Town of Wolfboro motels, hotels, B&amp;Bs, campground, and Cotton Valley Trail users, as well as special events, as permitted by the Board of Selectmen. Sailing and swimming lesson day programs are sponsored by the town. The beach code relative to the use of parking on Albee Town Beach shall be under the jurisdiction of the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen in accordance with RSA forty-one eight, Management of Prudential Affairs, and forty-one colon eleven dash A, Manage and Regulate Use of Town Property. This has been submitted by petition. And Suzanne, did you have a proposed amendment to this? The word presenting, about the sixth word in should be preserving?
That is correct.
Correct? All right. So it's been moved that we change the sixth or seventh word in from presenting to preserving. All those in favor of that technical change, please say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right. So that passes. Any further discussion on this article? Suzanne? And then you, sir, in the back.
I think what's intere, my name is Suzanne Ryan, and I was a member of the 2018-19 Master Plan, the Future Land Use Section, and the Natural Resource Section. Through that process, certainly my eyes were opened as to how we're treating our recreational lands. And I think the picture of the sign will kind of capsulize what it is I'm trying to get at. Albee Beach, open to the public. When, a brief history, and I've written this six times, I'm trying to make it as brief as possible. In nineteen eighty-eight, warrant article five, we purchased Allen Albee Beach for seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars with a seven-year bond at town meeting. It was quite a lively discussion as to how that property should be used, and it overwhelmingly came out through the minutes that, quote, "That the beach is for our family and children and our community. A beach for swimming," Selectmen Gannon stated, "for a town beach." That passed two-thirds vote required at four forty-six to one twenty-two. In nineteen eighty-nine, warrant article nine was presented to establish beach rules. It was thought that since we have a new beach, we'd be need to manage it. And so at town meeting, they discussed fees and rules, and Selectmen Brewett at that time said beaches would be used by taxpayers and their guests. Nineteen ninety, warrant article number sixteen, Citizens Petition, stated for residents only. That was tabled because the Board of Selectmen inserted their own, and it was along the same line. And this is the old-fashioned town meeting where you could table an article. So in nineteen ninety, warrant article number twenty, Town Beach Ordinance Uses states, the first line of the warrant article states, quote, "Use of Cary Beach and Allen Albee Beach shall be limited to residents and taxpayers of the Town of Wolfboro and their guests." Hence, Town Ordinance, Chapter sixteen, Beaches and Rules, are adopted and codified. In two thousand and twelve, warrant article number eighteen was constructed and, to construct the bathhouse that we know, and that was for one hundred and twenty-five thousand, and it was to replace potter parties. But it also was shown that the other reason for constructing it was that we had provided for town-run organizations, the swim teams, the little sailboat kids, and so forth. So it was, it was for recreational uses of our town's organization. And two thousand and sixteen, there was a whole discussion with the Board of Selectmen about warrant article twenty, and they amended their parking and curfew and fines within chapter sixteen, but they deleted a goodly part of it. And the thing that's interesting about what was done is that says, "Chapter sixteen through eight, the ordinance supersedes any and all preceding ordinances pertaining to the Town of Wolfboro beaches." So that's what brings me here. The warrant article is to try to bring that back to what we bought and why we bought it. And any of you that saw the two thousand and nineteen Granite State News, saw the article about being at the tipping point. It was like more of a question, are we at that tipping point? And it was stated that there's sixteen thousand visitors in a season. Season is usually three or four months. The, just hold on a second. Okay. Then I need to switch the slide. So the next one, that was the history. That's the history. And so then I take, I'd like to take you to the, we don't have a podium here, take you to the master plan. The master plan is surprisingly quite specific, and, oh, shoot. I'm sorry.
Suzanne, can I say something about nostalgia?
What?
Can I say a reinforcing comment while you're looking? About forty years ago, at a town meeting with Bob Barney in charge, Alvin White, who owned the beach, said he would sell it. I made a motion. I said, "They're not making any more land. Let's vote at the town meeting for two-hundred-and-some thousand dollars." And the town, that was before you had warrant articles, and the town bought it, and that's why you have it.
The master plan, two thousand and eighteen- nineteen, the Natural Resource Section of the master plan goal, properties owned by the town are valuable assets. They need to be protected for future generations. The town should also ensure that these properties are not overused. And then the Community Facilities Section was a little stronger, and it says, "In summer months, it is crowded with visitors, the septic system is stressed, the parking area is congested, and the parking overflow creeps up the privately-owned access easement road, creating unsafe and at times impassable conditions. Conditions and costs relating from allowance of use of the beach by the general public should be studied." The recommendation, quite clearly, restriction of use to taxpayers and their guests is recommended. So can we have, that's okay, that slide. So what we did was, we hired a soil scientist, a state-certified New Hampshire wetlands scientist, and he came to the site. He's written a letter. I'd like to just go through that quickly. It's not a long letter.
The operative word being quickly.
Pardon?
The operative word being quickly.
Yeah. Let's see. At the request of several residents of Wolfboro, put forth this petition about limiting use of Albee Beach. I am submitting this letter in support of the petition for the following reasons. And he's reviewed the warrant article, he's reviewed the master plan, and he has visited the site, he's taken photographs of the beach, and he noted, "I have reviewed the design specs for the septic system," which cites a seventy-five-person, one-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five-gallon-per-day-capacity. That septic system is designed and presented as a camp facility, no food, and it was approved for seventy-five people with the capacity. The seasonal high-water table is described at thirty-three inches from the surface, which in spite of the natural sandy base, does not allow for rapid infiltration of the leach field water, especially when the percolation rate of twenty inches deep is listed at two inches per hour. That's something they all have to take into study. A site visit was conducted. The, it reviews the conditions, which include the following: soils, do you have the pictures of the trees? Yes. Okay. The roots, and there's a couple of those like that. Soil's compaction is prevalent throughout the back beach area. The exposed tree roots indicate a loss of surface organic material. The septic leach field is less than fifty feet from what appears to be seasonally saturated, inundated wetland. The allowance of a pervious, six-foot-wide pathway to the beach, according to shoreline line restoration permits issued by NHDES in two thousand and twelve, has been exceeded by multiple packed pathways. And that's quite evident in the winter. When you go down, you can see, and I'm not putting a bad feeling out for the snowmobilers and the ice fishermen, of which I snowmobile too. But there's no demarcation of where they should go, so they're going all over these different roots of the trees, even though there's snow. For the above reasons, I encourage the Board of Selectmen to do the following: and support the petition efforts in limiting Albee Beach to residents only, conduct a detailed site assessment, and I'm not going to read all of what he suggests, and then, prior to a study, he suggests sample remediation measures for the upcoming summer. Summer may include, but not limited to, the following. And so some action items are in his letter about the pathways and so forth. So my point is, I'm trying to return the beach to what it was purchased for, and that was for the residents and taxpayers, families and guests, and to preserve and protect and be good stewards of a very valuable asset.
Thank you, Suzanne. Are there any comments or questions on article thirty-three? Yes, sir?
I'm Rich Massey, and for the past ten years, I've been a member of the Steering Committee for the Wentworth Crescent Watershed Management Plan. Matt Sullivan made reference to some portions of that earlier in the evening. That plan started in two thousand and ten, ran from the first phase. There have been four phases. Matt described phases three and four earlier tonight. Phase one, which went from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve, did, among other things, conducted a survey of the entire watershed and identified a significant number of places in the watershed where stormwater was a threat to the surface waters, to our streams, to our wetlands, and to our lakes. At the conclusion, or as part of that watershed plan, the consultants came up with a list of one hundred and eight locations that should have some attention, should be mitigated, where we should address stormwater runoff. The other three phases, including the two that Matt referred to tonight, have been involved in dealing with those hundred and eight sites. Now, you might wonder, if we have a hundred and eight sites, did Albee Beach show up as one of them? Well, the fact is, it did, but not in the way that's being presented here tonight. What was identified as a threat was right at the shoreline. If you know Albee Beach, it runs kind of east-west along the north shore of Lake Wentworth. The eastern part of it, near that long finger of land that goes out into the lake, drops very sharply into the lake, and at high water, that part of the beach gets eroded. That was identified by the consultants as an area that needed attention, and we've made some attempts at doing that. There was never any indication in that watershed management plan that the rest of the beach area, or the area behind it, presented any sort of threat to the lake and to the watershed. It may well be that we need to look at the beaches and how they're used. However, when we juxtapose the article as it's written now with a handful of handpicked slides from a report that few of us have ever seen, if any, we're kind of implying that passing that article will somehow address the issues in those slides. But we don't know that. We don't know that- We don't know that putting limitations in the way that that article proposes will in any way deal with the issues of compaction or anything else. I just would want to point out, too, just from my knowledge of Alby Beach, when I look at those pictures in that wooded area, what we're looking at is the picnic area. I don't know what the consultant means by robing it off, fencing it off. I don't know what he expects, or anybody expects, will happen to people who want to use the beach for picnic purposes. In any case, we all know that Alby Beach, Cary Beach, Brewster Beach, all receive thousands of visits per year. The implication is that somehow passing this article might mitigate that. But my question is, does anybody really believe that even if this article, and it's got a lot of problems apart from the environmental thing, does anybody believe that passing that article, as it's written, is going to lessen the number of people on those beaches? I think that's a significant question. It seems to me highly unlikely, but in any case, I would hate to use an environmental assessment that few, if any, of us have seen, used as a justification for that article.
Now, Mike, and then Alana.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Massey overlooks the initial part of Suzanne's presentation, her opening comments, where she refers to the community facilities chapter of the master plan, pardon, and its recommendations for the use of Alby Beach and for the current conditions of Alby Beach, where specifically overcrowding is described, parking lots overfilled are described, cars parked up the access road described with no ability of even fire trucks to get down, rescue vehicles to get down to the beach. The problem at Alby Beach, there may be an environmental problem, we can see from the slides, it appears to be, you don't need a report from an analyst to see that, it's quite clear for our eyes to see, but the real problem at Alby Beach, as it is at Cary, as I will discuss when the next article is called, is overcrowding. It's simply being used by way more people than the beach can comfortably accommodate without environmental degradation happening. Thank you.
Michael?
No, I got Alana next.
Somebody told me on TripAdvisor, it says, "Don't go to Wentworth State Beach and pay five dollars, go to Alby Beach free."
Should I answer that, Mr. Moderator?
Sure, if you'd like to.
TripAdvisor discusses Cary Beach in particular as a hidden gem in Wolfboro, where everything is free, provided by the town. Great place to go and hang out. Alby Beach is the same. All of the services are provided by the town for free, and we know from experience that busloads of people from southern-tier towns have had to be turned away from Alby Beach and Cary Beach. Fifty people at a time coming up to use our beaches, perfectly fine, but there's simply too many of them, and something needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Alana, you're up.
Thank you. I know I'm not a Wolfboro voter, I live in Tuftmore now, but having been born here and being the granddaughter of Alan Alby, I thought I should speak about the condition of the beach. I grew up on Hersi Point, right next door to the beach, and swam on this beach every day in my childhood. And then I left, I'd had a big international career, as some people know, and then I came back. And now, it's impossible to go there in the summertime because of the overcrowding. It's also very clearly damaged. In the years that I lived there, the trees were much more stable. I actually supported the investigation of this by Rick Vanderpoel, one of the leading arboritists in the state, to look at the conditions, because as a family member and my family's legacy, I was concerned deeply about this beach. It's not just about the water quality, we're proud of that. Lake Wentworth is very clean, it's wonderful, but the beach is being damaged. And certainly, when it was a resort, you couldn't drive down there, there was no parking lot, there was none of these toilets, you had to walk, and there was a reason for that. My grandfather was determined to keep that beach pristine, and it's a mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. I believe a comprehensive beach plan for all three of our beaches should come from the board of selectmen after a thorough look at this topic by our town planner. I see this Warren article and the next sending a lot more traffic over to Clark Road, where I live, and we have plenty of traffic on Clark Road already. Thank you.
Talk about in my backyard. Rick Vanderpoel is very credible, with great credentials, I don't think you have to question that. But I would like to note that when we put the bathhouse in, in 2011-12, the records show that the population that used the beach on a great sunny day was maybe a hundred people. And then the further reports go on to say, after the bathhouse was put in, three hundred to six hundred people. And now, we read that an estimated sixteen thousand visitors use Alby Beach, it's not talking about another beach. And if nothing else, don't take this scientist's word for it, just use common sense. It's overpopulated. And the second point is, return it to the voters and taxpayers of the town as a family beach for which it was paid for and intended and stated. And by the way, that sign at Alby Beach, public welcome or what have you, there is a lease with Brewster Beach in the town of Wolfboro. It's a dollar a year, and it's for ten years, and we're good till 2011. And it's renewable without any big to-do. The only stipulation in that is that we maintain it and keep it nice and clean, and that we have it open to the public. There's no sign at Brewster, "open to the public," but on Little Alby Beach, "open to the public." So, if you want to just throw out my argument about degradation and good stewards, just common sense, too many people are using that beach. Thank you.
I'd like to support what Bob was talking about, a comprehensive study of all of our resources. We clearly have a problem, there's overuse, there's degradation. I'm not comfortable with inviting people to come to our town and shop in our stores and eat in our restaurants and say, "But don't use our beaches." So I think there's a way for us to do this, I've seen other communities do it, where they have parking that's further away for non-residents and things like that. So I think we need a comprehensive approach to it. I would also say, to the point that was made a few years ago, I also live on Clark Road, McKinney Park was listed in Yankee Magazine as one of the ten best unknown swimming holes in New Hampshire, and I thought, "Oh, my God, that's the end of McKinney Park." And it wasn't. I mean, people came for a year or so, and then now it's the usual. But again, another place that needs some repairs. We clearly have to take care of our assets, but I'd like to see it done more comprehensively, rather than just these gut reactions to overcrowding.
Andrea Dudley from Moose Point Road, also near the Alby Beach. And I think, all of the environmental issues aside, and I understand there's great overcrowding there, or there's concern about great overcrowding, but I think this article, it's well-intentioned, but it doesn't really do anything to limit it. The exceptions are so broad, you can use the Bridge Falls path, people can park at the nick and walk in, I just don't see where this really provides any guidelines. So I would echo the need for a comprehensive plan. I think steps were taken at Alby to limit bus traffic. I think the selectmen, working in concert with the recreation director, should be allowed to continue those efforts, to manage this appropriately, rather than have this article, which I feel will do nothing to alleviate the problem.
All right, well, we pretty well exhausted this one. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to our last and final article, Article 34, "To see if the town will vote to add to the town beach ordinances," Chapter 16, a new section, has 16-4B to read. Use of Cary Beach and its parking area, 201 Forest Road, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, tax map 228-54, is restricted to residents of the town of Wolfboro, their families and guests, and to direct the board of selectmen to make any other rules necessary to carry out the intent of this article. This has been submitted by petition. And Mike, were you going to address this one first?
Since I was instrumental in getting this petition article onto the warrant, I will be brief, and we'll be home long before 4:00 AM, which the moderator had threatened us with in the beginning of these proceedings.
It obviously didn't work.
It clearly did not work, all to our benefit. Why restrict Cary Beach to residents, their families and guests? There are three reasons that I've come up with. The first, environmental challenges. Stormwater and parking lot pollution runoff into the bay is an increasing problem, we've heard Dave Ford discuss that. The presentation on Article 12, we heard tonight, showed that. That bond issue is a step forward in the town's plan to improve water quality in the bay. We can all do something about this challenge to the beach by supporting Article 12 at the polls. Number two, overuse challenges. Crowding is becoming a problem at Cary Beach. It's causing degradation through overuse by more people per day than ever before. Sand, vegetation debris, pollution fluids from more and more cars negatively affect water quality in the bay. Cary Beach has been, quote, "discovered," and as you all heard me say before, it's now on TripAdvisor as a very special review, as a hidden gem in Wolfboro. Recreation and rehabilitation programs in towns south of Farmington have begun looking at Cary, as well as Alby, but have begun looking at Cary Beach as a cheap day trip destination for their clients. One busload has already been turned away from Cary last year. Our parks and recreation departments keep, department, pardon, keeps visitor counts at Cary Beach. These show a dramatic increase in just the past two years. In 2017, they counted, the lifeguard counted seventy-one visitors per day, for a total of thirty-four-hundred-and-fifteen for the season, the season being July 4 to the start of Granite Man, so July 4 to the third week of August. In 2018, twenty-six persons a day, a decrease, it was colder, twelve-hundred-and-ninety-one total for the season. Last year, one-hundred-and-eighty-one people per day, eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixteen people at Cary Beach in that short season. That's enormous, that's a huge increase. The reasons for the increase aren't hard to think of. Cary's a free beach. It has a free lifeguard, it's got a free bathroom, and there's free parking. Free means, of course, that we pay for all of that, and it's my opinion that it's now time that we paid for a beach that's just for us, just for the town of Wolfboro, residents and family members. A yes vote on this petition, Warren article, will mean that our tax money will support Cary Beach services that are just for the residents of the town, their families and their guests. The third reason is, this is the third time we've tried this. We bought the beach in 1959. In 1967, residents of Wolfboro petitioned to have the beach restricted access to residents only. The then Parks and Playgrounds Commission thought it over and agreed, but they expanded the restriction to include anyone from Carroll County, as long as you had a CD license plate, you could go to the beach. Couple of years later, form of town government changed. There were no longer a Parks and Playgrounds Commission, there was a Parks and Recreation Department, and that restriction was forgotten. So in 1990, at town meeting, just like here, Kay Moody, Jim Lowry, presented an article with a complete set of ordinances to regulate the use of Cary and Alby Beaches, limiting them to town residents and guests in hotels. That ordinance, that Warren article passed with a majority. Those ordinances were enrolled on our list of ordinances, and they were in effect but unenforced for the next twenty-six years. In 2016, the chief of police came to the board of selectmen and said, "What do I do about these beach ordinances? There's only one I can enforce, that's the curfew, but you've got a whole bunch of others setting up a sticker system to show who was authorized to come to Alby and Cary Beach. What do I do about them?" And the board of selectmen, in their wisdom, said, "Let's repeal all of those beach ordinances, with the exception of the curfew ordinance." So they repealed all of the ordinances. That was the second time. This is, if the town votes for this Warren article, this will be the third time the town has said, "We would like to have at least Cary Beach restricted to the use of residents only." And I've made a mistake, Mr. Moderator, may I make an amendment to this article? And the reason for it being enshrined or enclosed in my comments, I'd like to remove in the second line the initial words "as" paragraph 16-4, colon, B. We do not have a 16-4, colon, A, we don't have a 16-4-3 or a 16-4-2. I don't think we even have a 16-1, because they were all repealed in 2016, yet they were still available on the town's website, on the code section of the town's website, which is where I got the number from.
So what would you like to amend?
I'm sorry. Remove second sentence, "as" para 16-4, colon, B.
So you'd just like to add a new section to read without saying what the number is?
Correct, just so it reads, "A new section to read."
Okay, that's very clear. Is there a second to that proposed amendment? Any discussion regarding that amendment? Seeing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that carries, it will not read "as" 16-4-B.
Thank you, and that's my presentation.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Linda, sure.
Yeah. Mike, did you intentionally leave out the word "taxpayers"? Because there are people who may be living in Florida, that's where they're residents, yet they come up here for the summer, they may not own lake property, and I'm just wondering whether you would be willing to add residents and taxpayers to that Warren article.
I did not, pardon, I did not leave that out. I used "residents" in the same sense that the word "residence" is used in all of our zoning articles, and in the same sense that the word "residence" has been used in the most recent Supreme Court decision case regarding short-term rentals in the city of Portsmouth, where they decided that where a word is not specifically defined in a list of ordinances, they will go to the common English usage, and in the common English usage, Webster's American Dictionary, resident means somebody who lives here.
So you're saying...
In other words, interchangeable.
Okay, so then what you're saying, a resident, then also somebody who rents a short term will also be a resident?
No, I didn't say that. What I said was, where the word is not defined in an ordinance, and if this passes, it will be up to the selectmen to craft ordinances to implement this. When you come to craft your ordinances, you can use resident, you can use taxpayer, however you mean, but the court, in my opinion, will define resident to mean taxpayer.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure you're clear and that you did not want to add that word, that's fine.
No, not at all.
All right, any other comments or questions on Article 34? Any other comments or questions on Article 34? Seeing none, is there any new business? Well, we're on the last one, so is there any new business? If there's no new business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. So move second. All right, all those in favor, adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.